Okay, good morning, everyone. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna call this meeting to order, and I'm gonna start with a short prayer. Father, we thank you today for all your many blessings. I thank you for the residents of the MD, and I thank you for council members. Give us wisdom today as we throw away on decisions for this MD. Also wanna thank you for the Queen and her passing. She was an amazing woman, and she'll be dearly missed. And thank you for the rest of this meeting in your name, Father. Amen. I also wanna read something on behalf of council. On behalf of council, staff, and residents of the Municipal District of Bonneville, extend our deepest sympathies to the royal family on the passing of Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II. The Queen was remarkable in her decision and commending to the Commonwealth. We are thankful for her leadership in times of crisis and for the example she sets for public servants through her endless support of the community and charity. The Queen's legacy will live through King Charles III. Thank you. Just looking if there's any additions to the agenda?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Reeve. Administratively, we would like council to consider adding several things. 9.5.3, which is an invitation to participate in the Lake Trout Working Group for Cold Lake, not the city, but for the lake itself. 9.5.4, the Bonneville and District SPCA Raise the Woof Event, request for support. 9.5.5, the federal holiday announcement for September 19th, 2022. And under closed session, 12.1, letter of support for resident under FOIP Section 17 and 21.
Any other additions? Okay, seeing none, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
We'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Sutcliffe, for making a motion to adopt the agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, oh, sorry, call for the vote. Need the adoption of the minutes, regular meeting of council for August 24th, 2022?
Yeah, I'll move that we approve the minutes from the August 24th meeting.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Crick, for making that motion. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, I'll, sorry, call for the vote. Yes, we'll go on to number six, six one.
Mr. Reeve, members of council, if I may have liberty to hijack the agenda for just 30 seconds, I think it's important to introduce council to our new general manager of corporate services. Susan, if you'd please stand up. So Susan Walker is our new GM of corporate services. Susan comes from us, from the city of Grand Prairie. She, for many years, was the general manager of corporate services for the city of Grand Prairie. Prior to that, she had been finance manager for the city of Grand Prairie and a whole bunch of other things for the city of Grand Prairie. We are pleased to have Susan. She started work on Monday, so I just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce her to council. So you're sitting there looking at this new face in the crowd, wondering who that might be. So Susan, council, council Susan, welcome.
It's a pleasure to be here, and I'm sure I'm looking forward to meeting one of you out in council.
Thank you. So Al, is this a good time for her to make her half an hour speech?
Yes, and I would suggest that council just pepper away with budget questions. She is completely up to speed at 24 hours. I absolutely start asking.
All right. I bet you can.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
This is development application 2022-D-166. The applicant is TCSYEG Permit Experts, and the owner is Harold Hoffman. The applicant is applying for a natural resources extraction and process facility use for a Class II gravel pit. The property is located at the Township Road 610 and Highway 657 intersection, 4.8 miles south of the hamlet of Fort Kent. Adjacent properties are residential parcels, quarter sections, and remnants. The applicant is applying for a Class II gravel pit. The proposed operation would include crushing, screening, washing, and stockpiling of materials. The wash bay would be located in the shop once renovations are completed. Hours of operation would be Monday to Sunday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and Sunday closed. Empty vehicles will access the site from Township Road 610, and vehicles would leave through a proposed approach onto Highway 657. The lifespan of this proposed Class II gravel pit is two years. An Alberta transportation permit is pending for the approach and for the use. Due to neighbor concerns received prior to this application and the cost of a progressive reclamation plan, this application is being presented without one to allow council to review and to decide if the proposed development would unduly interfere with the amenities of the neighborhood or materially interfere with or affect the use, enjoyment, or value of neighboring properties. A Class II gravel pit, which is under five hectares, including the pit, road, stockpiles, and associated facilities, does not require an approval from Alberta Environment and Parks. However, they are required to comply with the Environmental Protection Guidelines for pits and all components of the Water Act. Further, a reclamation certificate is required at the end of the life of the pit. Referrals were sent out to the municipality's Infrastructure Services and Public Service Department on August 23rd, 2022, and the applicant would be required to enter into a road use agreement. Public Safety submitted concerns about the number of trucks traveling through the area on Township Road 610 and the noise produced from the wash bay. Public Safety has received previous concerns about this property from an adjacent landowner. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on August 23rd, 2022, and we received three letters and one call of concern. Concerns are the increased noise, traffic, wear and tear on the road, loss of enjoyment and value of the property, negative impacts on the livestock, and negative impacts on health as one of the adjacent landowners is allergic to dust. Additional concerns received are regarding safety at the pit and unauthorized access of the pit, groundwater changes and changes to the aquifers, wetland disturbance, and reclamation. These concerns should be addressed in the progressive reclamation plan. Recommendation for development application 2022-D-166 is table the request for a natural resources extraction and processing facility use for Class II gravel pit within northeast 3665 west of the 4th to allow the applicant to submit a progressive reclamation plan by October 5th to be presented at the October 26th, 2022 council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
We, oh, sorry, we do have an adjacent landowner, Grace Preston, in attendance to speak against the application. Okay.
Okay.
Hi.
Sorry.
Good morning.
Mr. Reeve, if I may just interrupt for a moment, we do need a motion from council approving the member of the public to address council.
Okay, sorry about that. My fault.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to allow Grace to speak.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Crick, for making that motion. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I call for the vote.
Sorry, just one moment, Mr. Reeve. We're just putting the motion into the system.
Sorry. You're bringing it up? All right, that's what, you're okay with that? Counselor Crick, that's good? Yeah. Okay. All right, then I'll call for the vote. It's on the screen, I guess. Carrie, thank you. Okay, go ahead, Grace.
I have a number of concerns with the noise level, also the traffic on the road. The traffic on that road.
Use the mic a bit more. Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
No problem.
I have a lot of concerns about the traffic on the road, the noise level. I live directly across that roof. The noise level, I already hear the equipment. The road is a narrow road, it's not a wide road. There's already an increase on that road from, traffic from the oil field. There's also concerns with the added trucks coming on. I also have an allergy to dust. It's all gonna affect my peace and quiet is the reason why I moved out to the country to begin with. I do not sleep at night because of injuries, and that's gonna affect, because when I do go to sleep, it is anywhere from 5:00 to 7:00 o'clock in the morning. So with that increased noise, it's gonna affect me. It's gonna affect my ability to open the windows of my house from the dust or the noise. I also concerned about property value. If I go to sell, I wouldn't buy a property across from there. Is it gonna affect my property value? Or how hard is it gonna make it to resell my property with the activity across the road? Like the traffic, like I said, it's a narrow road. We're already continuing with all the traffic from the oil field blaring down that road. And I've phoned numerous times even on that, and you get no results. The only one that has gone out there is one empty bylaw officer. That seems to keep it on, they're hauling everything, whatever they want. My daughter says whipped into the driveway on a couple occasions because the trucks have been on her ass. Now you're gonna add gravel trucks, which is gonna increase the safety concern on that road. That's about all I have to say.
Okay, is there any questions? Yes, Counselor Swigert.
Yeah, thanks for that, thanks for that input. Can you just, like, I have a map here. I don't know where you live, though. I'd really like to know, are you on 657 or?
No, I'm on 610, right across the property.
And I'm not sure what that means, though. Like, are you north?
This property is on this side of the road, mine's right here.
We can bring a map up?
It's only 610 is dividing the properties.
So 6, Township Road 610 is, is, that's on the north of that, then, isn't it? North of the?
I know, on the north side, he's on the south.
And so you're just north of that, on that map? Just north of the circle? Yeah.
Near southwest of one?
Yeah, southeast one.
Yeah, southeast one? Okay.
Yep.
And can you just describe, you said you're already, like, there's already noise and there's already stuff going on?
Yeah, there's also traffic that's always going down the roads.
Okay, but no gravel, nothing?
No, there's gravel trucks that are already beating down the road. I don't know where they're going.
No, but not from that pit, though, are they? Like, they're already working?
No, no, they're not on the road yet.
Okay. So that was kinda my question. They're not already working, causing trouble right now for you, are they?
No, no.
Okay, well, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Have a great day. Yes, go ahead.
Do you want a motion now?
Any other discussion? You guys want, yeah, good. Okay. Yeah, we're looking for a motion.
Yeah, I'll make the motion, option one, that we table it, but I'd also like to add to that motion, just that people can, 'cause the, I think the time for adjacent or affected landowners to get their letters in was the 7th of September, I think, and I know, like, one person called me, he was on holidays, and he missed the deadline, and I've had a few calls of concerns about it, so I'd just like to extend the period for adjacent and affected landowners to get their letters of concern into October 12th, if that's possible.
Is that all right with council that he adds that? So you wanna add that to the motion then, Steph? Yeah? Okay. No, just wait for it to come up, and then we can read it. Okay, we have a motion moved by Counselor Crick on behalf of council. The council tables the request for natural resource extraction and proceeding facilities used for a Class II gravel pit within northeast 3665 west of the 4th M under October 26th, 2022, regular meeting of council to allow the applicant time to submit a progressive reclamation plan by October 12th, 2022, as per the recommendation presented. Any, yes?
Yeah, it, I think the reclamation plan needs to be in October 5th. That's what the table, the recommendation from the staff said, and it's the, I just want it to have app, like, adjacent landowners and affected landowners to be able to get, have till the 12th to get their, their letters of objection or concerns in, so that we can hear them at the October 26th council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. We're just updating that now. My apologies.
Okay, we have, it's updated, so is that correct now, Counselor Crick?
Yes, that's correct now. Thank you, Steph.
Okay, thanks you for that. Any other discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie. Onto developments, 6.2.
This is development permit application 2022-D-182. The applicant is CETA Geomatics, and the owner is North Bay Holdings. The applicant is applying for an intensive recreation use for a campground. The property is located on the northwest shore of Cold Lake on Range Road 443. Adjacent properties are crown land. Just a little preamble about the property. This is an existing multi-owner recreational property, which was previously part of ID-18. All the structures on the property were constructed or placed on the lands prior to 1975. They are all considered non-conforming due to their location, they don't meet the 30-meter setback from the high water mark. So these buildings are considered non-conforming. They can stay on the land, but they cannot be renovated, added to, or structurally altered. Once the structures are unlivable, they will require removal. This development application and the campground guide is a blueprint for the lands going forward. So the applicant is applying on behalf of North Bay Holdings. The ownership group would like to establish a campground use to allow the continued use of the property and the non-conforming buildings until such time as the non-conforming buildings are removed. These buildings are considered non-conforming due to not meeting the required 30-meter setback from the high water mark of Cold Lake. This proposal does not include any recreational dwellings, and any proposed new development or buildings will require an approval from the ownership group prior to applying through the municipality. Year-round residential living will not be permitted. Site access, driveway, and parking are existing. Maintenance of such will be at the discretion of the ownership group. There are 14 lots, and the maximum number of recreational vehicles for the site will be 35, and that will be distributed amongst the ownership group on their own. There are no adjacent landowners to notify. Our recommendation for development application 2022-D-182 is approve the request for an intensive recreation use for a campground within southwest 1965-1 west of the 4th Meridian as a discretionary use pursuant to Part 6, Section 35 of the General Regulations, and Part 7, Section 69.2 of the Land Use Bylaw for CETA Geomatics Incorporated on behalf of North Bay Holdings with the following conditions. No more than 35 recreational vehicles shall be on site at a time, shall comply with Noise Control Bylaw Number 1657, shall comply with Nuisance Bylaw Number 981. As per Section 69.6 of the Land Use Bylaw, the minimum setback shall be front yard 38 meters from the center line of the adjacent public roadside, and rear yard 6 meters. As per Section 41, a minimum building setback of 30 meters is required from the high water mark of any, of a water body to which the crown claims ownership. A minimum building setback of 30 meters is required from the top or bottom of an escarpment slope or other steep slope where the grade exceeds 15% unless the development authority is satisfied by submission of a geotechnical engineering study prepared by a professional engineer that, that a lesser setback is warranted. Applicable gas, plumbing, sewer, electrical permits are required as per Alberta Safety Codes Act. Approved building permits are required as per Alberta Safety Codes Act for any building over 150 square feet or if life safety is involved. Non-conforming buildings may remain as sighted as non-conforming buildings and may not be added to or altered without conforming to the municipal requirements. And we do have the applicant here if you have additional questions.
Okay, thank you. Looking for a motion, or if someone wants to speak to that?
Mr. Reeve, I do have some questions. If you look at the, the area map and the size of the lots, they're all relatively short lots, you got a 30-meter setback. I'm not sure what's gonna happen in the future, because you've got, you've got buildings that are already in that area that shouldn't be. And so you've got, you've got a 40-meter lot, and then you're not allowed to have buildings within the first 30 meters, so it just kinda looks weird. It's like, you, I guess we're saying you could never probably have buildings there unless they're right at the very front of the lot, but is there any plan to, though? Like, 'cause those buildings have to be removed, so I'm trying to wrap my head around this. Is this a campground, or is it something that they'll rent out forever and people will kinda be there, the same people, you know, forever as a lake lot? Is that the deal? I'm not sure.
Through the reef, to Counselor Swigert. So the buildings are non-conforming. They continue to be used until they cannot be used anymore. The setback is for buildings only, so they can actually park RV units closer than, than that 30-meter setback. So the intent is to still utilize the property, utilize the existing infrastructure that's there, and use campers going forward.
Can I just clarify then? Is it a campground that anybody can go rent, like, monthly or daily or weekly, or is it, how is they working that one?
This is a private campground, and to gain access to that, you have to be part of the ownership group. And ownership is dependent on the ownership group. It just isn't, it's not open to just anyone.
Okay, thank you.
Can you maintain the cabins that are there? Can you update them, or zero maintenance?
Routine maintenance as allowed by the development authority.
Any other discussion or questions? If not, I'm just looking for a motion.
Mr. Reeve, can I just clarification then? So there's already a campground there. It's been there for, for a long time. And so is this now they're just kinda applying for an official campground? 'Cause it was unofficial before, or what, what's the difference now?
Through the reef, to Counselor Swigert. They are making it official now. They want to be in compliance with the land use bylaw going forward. The previous campground was approved under ID-18 way back. This has been established, like, 1960s, 1955, I believe, was one of the oldest applications I found in the land file. So they just want to be in compliance, to be able to go forward with this.
Mr. Reeve, so no more than 35 recreational vehicles on site at any time? Why that number? Is that based on our three-per-lot thing?
So because this is a recreational use, they can apply for more than the three, and this was the number that was set forward by the applicant and the group, based on how many landowners there are and how many they would want on each specific site.
So that, you just confused me now. You said more than three, so right now you're only allowed three recreational vehicles on, on a single lot? Are you saying they're, you just said they were applying for more than three? Are you saying 35 on a single lot? It just says here, no more than 35. I'm asking why that number, and is that for the whole area, or is, are you dividing that up?
They are dividing that up amongst themselves. It's 35 for the, the parcel.
For the whole area?
For the whole area.
For all 14 lots, correct?
Right.
Okay.
So whatever that is, divided by 14, two point.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead. I'm just curious, so these bearings, to be able to conform, they have to get these bearings off. What's the lifespan if we're, that, before we have all these bearings removed?
Through the reef, to Counselor Sutcliffe. That will be determined on a as-is basis, right? Some of them are in poor shape as it is. That will be determined by the ownership group.
Any other questions, comments?
I was just gonna make a motion to approve it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Reeve, if I may, Mr. Reeve, members of council, just for the development authorities, just for clarity, there's a question asked about routine maintenance. Routine maintenance, such as, you know, staining the deck, would not be an issue. I think we run into problems with renovations or additions, so if somebody needed to build a new deck, that may run into an issue with the development authority in terms of its ability to be permitted because of its non-conforming status. So routine maintenance that doesn't change anything other than maybe painting a window sill, or et cetera, et cetera, painting a wall inside, but if you wanted to build new walls, or you wanted to build a new deck, those issues may be problematic moving forward because of the non-conforming status.
Okay, that's why I asked the question, because lots of times I heard, you know, they build a new cabin on top of the cabin, and then they pull the cabin out through the door. So that's just why I wanted to know that.
You had a question, council? Anyone else have a question? All right, thank you, Counselor Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council approves development permit application number 2022-D-182, an intensive recreation use for campground within southwest of 1965-1 west of the 4th Meridian as discretionary use pursuant to Part 6, Section 35 of the General Regulations, and Part 7, Section 62-point, sorry, 69.2 of the Land Use Bylaw for CETA Geomatics Incorporated on behalf of North Bay Holdings Limited as per the recommendation presented. Any discussion on this motion? Yes, Counselor Swigert?
Just a question about things like sanitary sewer, and there's comments made of it. Do, we've had people inspect all that so that we don't kinda get stuck into something? Like, everything's good out there as far as sewers and that sort of thing? Or do we know that?
Through the reef, to Counselor Swigert. Since these buildings have been on since 1975, we do not have the permits in our file as they were issued by the province. If there's any concerns that come up, then we can send out our safety codes officer for sewer. But as it is right now, if the systems have not failed, they are still compliant.
I'm just thinking, Mr. Reeve, like, we haven't, you know, we can approve this, but should we have any checks first before we approve it? I, just questioning. I'm not sure if, you know, if we haven't. I'm not sure if, you know, if we haven't inspected it since the early seventies and we probably didn't then because it was ID. Is there any concerns that we should be concerned about? I I don't know, asking the question.
Well, I think it's just more or less a campground. I don't think they live there year-round, so I I can't see there being a full full sewer system there anyway. I guess if you want to ask the question, there is a person that's here, you said. Look at that.
Yes, we do have a representative from CETA Geomatics, Bruce Drake, that has been working with the ownership group. If you want to direct the question to him.
So do we need to make a motion to bring someone up too? Yeah? All right, if you want to ask this question, you'd have to make a motion to bring Mr. Drake up.
I'll make the motion to have whoever is speaking on behalf of this.
Mr. Drake is his name?
I do.
Okay.
If he's willing to, maybe he doesn't want to answer that or talk about that one.
Okay, she's just writing up a motion, one second.
Yeah, it will be. Quick, a quick minute. We just need a motion first so that you're allowed to speak to us. Yep.
We're lucky, we're lucky I'm not typing because it would be a half an hour. Yeah, I'm on one finger, maybe maybe two fingers at best, yeah. Really?
Mr. Reeve?
Yes. I think it's councillor Swigert. All right, thank you councillor Swigert for making a motion that council approves the application for the agenda. Item six point two, development application number twenty twenty-two D one eight, intensive recreation to address council. Call for the, any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, call for the vote. Carrie, thank you. Go ahead, Dana.
I guess you kind of got the gist of my concerns. I I just didn't want council to have to approve something that we're not really that familiar with and I don't think I've ever been out to that area. So, you know, I'm I'm happy that you're actually coming forward to council to get approvals because it's been years apparently, but, yeah, so can you tell me that should we be worried about any kind of septic systems? I mean, I know it's not, they're seasonal, but we always have that issue.
So Bruce Drake, CETA Geomatics, I'm the consultant for the landowner. President of North Bay Holdings is also in attendance today. The information provided to me by the ownership group is that firstly, they do want to have a permitted use, that they're, they don't want the uncertainty of a non-permitted use. As far as the sewage system goes, the ownership group has taken steps over the years to have septic pump-out systems, no fields, no outhouses, that type of thing. In terms of their plan going forward, I I guess the the weak assurance that I can provide you is that they're trying to do the steps to to make sure that this is operated in a environmentally responsible and appropriate manner. I mean, this permitting process is the first step to that. They certainly are not against the idea of permit applications for new uses and that is addressed in their in their campground plan. To maybe throw a dart and say, are the current septic systems perfect and and wonderful? I I haven't, I'm not that type of inspector. But they're certainly not, they're not, they're not trying to operate, you know, how shall we say, in a in the behind a curtain. They're bringing this out to the public and to for your consideration to try to do things appropriately. So I know that doesn't answer your question, but they're trying. And if there's any concerns, I am confident that they would address them. But as the administration has said, there hasn't been any concerns raised and I've been on-site and it's not like there's green goo bubbling up that I've seen. It's kind of a weak answer, I I understand that.
No, that's fair, you know, appreciate the answer. Yeah, I'm not quite sure what the MD's authorities are there either. Like if, you know, we'd only go out there and look apparently if there was a concern from someone. So if it's all good and no one's complaining, I guess it's okay. Anyway, appreciate appreciate the response.
May may I make a a a comment to something else that was raised or is?
You can, you can, no problem.
Um, as part of the application, there was a a plan that showed existing buildings, cabins, and the word lot has been used to sort of describe each of the sites. This, the overall campground, the overall property is going to be used by North Bay Holdings as an ownership group. The lines on paper that sort of show the width and depth of uses, they're not intended to ever to be individual titled boundaries. So if you look at and say, well, the depth of the lot is maybe less than you would expect for, say, a residential use, it's a line on paper that starts at the lakeshore and goes to the base of a slope. I mean, arguably, we could extend that line up a hill and it would be bigger but unusable land in terms of placing a recreational vehicle on it. So it's it's not a boundary. It's a representation of what the owners have agreed are going to be useful pieces or useful sites for camping purposes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Thanks, that helped too because I looked at those lots and thought, you know, they're kind of narrow. So the property, the owner actually owns kind of that whole lot and block and plan and they're just kind of arbitrarily, there's, I haven't been out there, so you're right, there's a hillside or something and you can't really get up there.
And and if you look at the way the MD road comes down like straight south and then it curves off to the east there, it's because it's sort of following the the top of a hill. So there there is a slope in there. And then obviously when you get down to the lakeshore, the usable, enjoyable area is that that piece that's, you know, everybody wants and obviously you guys would like to protect through your body.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, we do. I guess we had that motion on the floor already, didn't we, councillor Crick's motion?
Yes.
Any other discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess we'll do one more. We'll go to nine, nine point two, planning and, in a second, nine point two one. No more cast, awesome.
No more cast. Good morning, council.
Morning.
Good morning.
So administration has prepared bylaw number eighteen oh two to repeal the current MD bylaw number fourteen oh three. Fourteen oh three, at the request from an adjacent landowner, had been previously proposed and approved for the closure and sale of an approximate seven point eight acre portion of road plan seven five two zero six two five and nine one two one five three one as shown in appendix B. Bylaw eighteen oh two repeals bylaw fourteen oh three, which was for the purpose of closing and selling portions of those road plans previously mentioned in accordance with the municipal government, municipal government act as described in appendix A. Bylaw fourteen oh three was given first reading already on September tenth, two thousand and eight. A public hearing was held October twenty-second, two thousand and eight, where no members of the public were present, nor any correspondence was received. Alberta Transportation Minister approved, approval was then secured to proceed. Second and third readings were given on June tenth, two thousand and nine. The MD received notification from the original applicant in two thousand and ten expressing that they do not wish to proceed with the purchase. A survey was never completed, which is a requirement of the process, and no payment was received from the applicant, nor was it registered at Alberta land titles. Alberta Transportation was consulted in October twenty twenty-one regarding repealing this bylaw as it was no longer required. They indicated that they had no objection to repealing the bylaw fourteen oh three. Bylaw eighteen oh two was given first reading on July thirteenth earlier this year, two thousand and twenty-two, and a public hearing was held on August twenty-fourth, at which no written or verbal communication was submitted. Attached for council's review in appendix A is the new bylaw eighteen oh two. Appendix B is a map showing the portions of the road plans mentioned and covered by this bylaw and the original bylaw fourteen oh three. Administration's recommended action is for council to consider providing a second reading and followed by third reading of bylaw eighteen oh two.
Okay, thank you. Looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept first reading, second reading, sorry. We give a second reading.
Okay, I have councillor Cravack here. Okay, switch now. Okay, thank you councillor Subchuck for making on motion behalf of behalf of council that bylaw number eighteen oh two being a bylaw of municipal district of bylaw number eighty-seven to repeal bylaw number fourteen oh three to be given second reading. Any discussion on this? I'll call for the vote. Okay, Carrie? Looking for another motion or to go to third reading?
I'll move to go into third reading.
Okay, thank you councillor Crick for making a motion on behalf of council that bylaw number eighteen oh two be given third reading. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you. Nine two two?
Certainly, nine two two. I am going to ask Scott Peiritz, our planner, to come up and present this report to council.
Thank you.
Sorry, if we could just bring up appendix, appendix A. Thank you. Morning. Good morning. Well, thank you Reeve and council. So before you today for first reading is a proposed bylaw that would amend the land use bylaw in order to allow for beekeeping on smaller residential, commercial, industrial, and agricultural lots. This would be done through the addition of a new use known as beekeeping. Beekeeping would be a smaller operation for personal use. At this time, I would like to note that this use is specifically tailored for smaller lots as there is already an existing commercial beekeeping use allowed under the intensive agricultural and extensive agricultural uses, which are allowed on the agricultural district of parcels of eight point zero nine hectares or twenty acres or larger. So the first changes to the land use bylaw would be found under section forty-nine, keeping of animals, with the addition of subsection forty-nine point seven, thank you, which would add new regulations. So which would add the new regulations for locating hives, a minimum thirty meters from any property line adjacent to a school or public use, locating hives within the rear yard of a property. Hives would be located a minimum of three meters from all property lines. So this would refer to any property line that is not adjacent to a school or public space. A maximum of two hives would be allowed per property and an additional third hive would be allowed temporarily for a period of one month to allow for proper hive management. A solid barrier of one point eight meters in height would be needed to surround the hive. So this would be aid the directing of bees up and over adjacent properties in the forage, in their foraging efforts. And finally, the hive entrance would be located away from walkways and adjacent properties. So next I'll scroll down here. So under section sixty-eight is the chart that lists the land uses and their available districts. So from this chart, you will note that beekeeping, it may be a little difficult to see here, right in that line there. So beekeeping was added to country residential CR one and country residential large lots CR two as a discretionary use. The CR one district requires a minimum parcel size of one point two hectares or three acres and the CR two district requires a minimum parcel size of two point zero hectares or four point nine four acres. Beekeeping was also added as a permitted use under the rural, commercial, and rural industrial districts. So parcels of those districts are the minimum parcel sizes left to the discretion of the development authority. However, they are typically larger lots and they often have less interaction and less proximity to residential lots. And then finally, under the agricultural district, you may see here where it says P and D, it was added as both a permitted and discretionary use based upon the size of the agricultural parcel. So parcels that are greater than or equal to four point zero four hectares or ten acres, it would be considered a permitted use. And for parcels smaller than four point zero four or ten acres, it would be considered a discretionary use. So as we scroll through here, C through I essentially just repeats what I mentioned, which uses or which districts the use would be permitted and discretionary. So really, we just jump down here to J where we add in definitions to the land use bylaw. So a definition was added for apiaries that reads the activities of keeping bees for the purpose of commercial honey production. As I mentioned, that's just to provide some clarity between the intensive agriculture and extensive agriculture, which would allow it as a commercial operation because it specifically lists apiary in the definition, which I'll read to you in just a second here. And then beekeeping was added as a definition as well, which reads as the activity of keeping a limited number of bees to produce honey for personal use. A definition was added for hives that reads any container that houses or holds a colony of bees. And finally, the existing definition of intensive agricultural was amended. It reads currently as a commercial agricultural operation, including an intensive livestock operation, which due to the nature of the operation requires a relatively small tract of land as provided for as small agricultural holdings in the agricultural district without restricting the generality of the foregoing. This shall include greenhouses, market gardens, sod farms, beekeeping, tree farms, and horse holding areas, but does not specifically include a dwelling unit. This includes exotic animal husbandry and apiaries, but does not include a medical marijuana or cannabis facility. So it would be amended by removing the wording beekeeping to distinguish the two uses between the commercial and the more personal use for smaller parcels. So with that, that's all the changes that would come in with this bylaw. It is relatively small and straightforward. So if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions, gentlemen? Okay, just looking for a motion then to go to, be given first reading? Got councillor Swigert?
Thanks, Mr. Reeve, I'll make that motion.
All right, thank you councillor Swigert for making motion on behalf of council that bylaw number LU five seven four being a bylaw of municipal district of bylaw number eighty-seven to amend the land use bylaw be given first reading. Any discussion on this? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Okay, Carrie, thank you. I think we're going to take a few-minute break here before we, sorry? Oh, sorry. Oh, yeah. Looking for another motion?
I'll make a motion for third reading. I'll make a motion for third reading.
Where's their third reading? Okay, sorry, thank you. Moved by Council Subject on behalf of council that council approves November twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two at ten AM has a date and time for the bylaw number LU five four, public hearing. Sorry, guys, I saw that on the screen and I didn't take. Any discussion on this motion? Seen on, I'll call for the vote. Okay, Carrie, thank you. Sorry about that. We'll now take like a five minute break. Okay, welcome back. We have public hearing. Before we begin with public hearing, I'd like to remind those who wish to address any of the public hearing on today's agenda to register your name on the speaker's list at the entrance of council chambers. I believe that's been done already. I would also like to outline the process of following for this public hearing. Number one, we will be begin with staff report on, from administration, followed by questions of administration from council. We will then call up members of the public who wish to speak in support of the application, followed by those who wish to, to speak in opposition of the application. Council may ask questions of the public presenter during this time only. Finally, we will entertain any finally, final questions of administration from council before closing the public hearing. May I have a motion to open public hearing? Thank you, Council Crick, for opening public hearing. Sorry. Thank you, Council Crick, on behalf of council that public hearing for item four one be opened at ten oh eight AM. Any discussion on this? Call for the vote? Okay, Carrie, thank you. I believe we go to Esther, note?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. First, we have a public hearing for bylaw number eighteen oh four, Ardmore Area Structure Plan. Pursuant to Part seventeen, Section six nine two one C of the Municipal Government Act, before giving second reading to a proposed bylaw for the adoption of an area structure plan, council must hold a public hearing. Chris Elmer of Urban Systems Limited, on behalf of the M D administration, will be presenting an overview and summary of the Ardmore Area Structure Plan. Bylaw eighteen oh four was given first reading at the August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two council meeting. Attached for council's review in Appendix A is the proposed bylaw eighteen oh four and Ardmore Area Structure Plan. As well in Appendix B, we have the original Ardmore Area Structure Plan passed in two thousand and four, bylaw number thirteen oh one. And in Appendix C, we have our presentation, which Mr. Elmer is about to provide to council. So with that, I will invite Mr. Elmer to come up and say a few words. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. And thank you, council, for the opportunity to come present this before you. It's been a great joy to work in partnership with the Planning and Development Team on working through the updates and review to the Ardmore Area Structure Plan, which we will walk through a little bit of the process, a little bit of the general direction that we put into the review and update and walk you through a summary of the document itself. Okay, apparently I have to be smarter than the mouse to turn it on. Thank you. So in terms of the, the role of, and the purpose of the plan itself, ultimately, the municipal district does provide more detailed direction within subareas throughout the M D. Ultimately, this is to guide the type, the form, and the location of any future development within the defined community of the area structure plan. So the municipal district has embarked on a multi-year process to review and update all of your planning documents. And so the two that were first out of the gate were the Ardmore and Cherry Grove area structure plans that went forward for review and update. And here, we wanted to go through that process with you, talk a little bit about the, the changes that were made to the document itself, the updates to the future area structure plan. And we went through this with some of the, some internal engagement with both council as well as internal staff and external engagement with the community as well. So in section one, we talked very specifically about the, the purpose and also the authority that the area structure plan has in presenting the role and the rationale for its update. So ultimately, when the M D went forward with the multi-year review of all of their planning documents, age and context were a big part of that, looking at the age of the plans, the change of the context since the adoption of the original plans, and the changes to the Municipal Government Act that have been enacted since the initial adoption of those plans. So we wanted to get in, have a look at what's changed significantly that would alter the direction of the previous plan that was adopted, and also build from the, the community objectives that were established at that point in time. So what we really wanted to focus on in terms of some of the priority themes was a coordination of the land use within the community and ensuring that there was strong delineation between what was, what was, or what was proposed, what was envisioned for the future, and how that was going to relate to what ultimately gets decided upon. Looking again at the contiguity of development, how different development patterns relate to each other, making sure that we have relationship between what is serviced, what is serviceable, and not having the big gaps between the development and areas that were undeveloped or unserviced. Jumped ahead. We wanted to provide some clarity of the land use, making sure that what we put into the plan has some clarity around how to help the decision makers make decisions on development that gets put before them. And then ultimately incorporate development that supports financial resiliency of the, of the community itself. So we wanted to make sure that as development decisions are being made, that the municipality is incorporating how that development relates to the servicing, the facilities, all of the services that are being provided to the community, and how the development becomes part of the overall viability of, of the municipality itself and the community as a whole. Then the authority of the plan, this is essentially authorized through the Municipal Government Act legislation and is required to follow all of the hierarchy of other plans that are put before the area structure plan. So this does need to comply with the overarching plan, the municipal development plan. It does need to comply with the regional plan that is put in place and any other provincial policies that would regulate the use there. And then the area structure plan provides that much more detail, fine-grained use at the community level that then future land use decisions can be made on as land use bylaw subdivision and those types of decisions come before you. So we did invite the community to engagement sessions within Ardmore. We did post and present the draft as we had initially put it forward. We did want to use the opportunity to confirm local priorities as they were identified in the initial plan, as were, and as were identified in the, in some of the internal engagements and the initial review of the area structure plan from two thousand and four. So some of the priority themes that came forward were to increase business opportunities on Main Street, to increase the, the sustainability of Main Street as that Main Street corridor, as that core of, of the community itself. A lot of conversation around leveraging some of the amenities that are already there, some of the great spaces, some of the great facilities, obviously, the school, to maintain or retain, retain population and to continue their successful use in order to maintain the community as a desirable place to live, maintain the, the, the small town feel, the quote-unquote small town feel, but maintaining openness to growth, recognizing that opportunities for growth that are complementary to the character of the community will ensure the long-term sustainability of the community and ensure the long-term sustainability of the facilities that are there, making the community an attractive place to be, and maintaining the vision within the plan when making decisions on development. So as we put forward suggestions within the plan, as we put forward land use patterns, proposed future land use concepts within the plan, making sure that we're using this as the, the benchmark for making decisions, but also reviewing it and maintaining flexibility to change as it, as it is warranted. And finally, in the first section, we take a look at the context of the community and determine if there have been any significant changes that have occurred since the initial adoption in two thousand and four. So we did take a look, this is one of the, the hamlets within the M D that the, the census does track population change. So there was slight fluctuations over the years, but it's largely been a stable population within Ardmore itself, really dating back to two thousand and six. So there's been a bit of a up and down, fluctuating between roughly two fifteen and what, or three fifteen, and when it came in, in the twenty twenty-one census at three forty-six. So it, it's been up and down, but really only about thirty to forty folks. So it's been a pretty stable population over the last fifteen years. It's got a fairly significant commuter labor force, so it does reinforce the notion that Ardmore is acting as a bit of a bedroom community to some of the larger employment centers to the east and to the west. In terms of the existing land use, it has a fairly tight development core that would be expected within the traditional small town. There are large tracts of vacant land that do surround the existing core that would be available to any future growth or expansion needs. But that would largely be based, again, on, on the servicing and the infrastructure requirements that would come alongside that future development opportunity. No major environmental or physical constraints that are significant limitations. The main limiting factor is, is simply the cost of servicing. And so looking at where the wastewater, the gravity wastewater limitations are, and outside of that, it's not that they aren't serviceable from a constraint perspective, it's just the, the nature of the topography would require initial investments to expand the system to ensure that it can drain to the lagoon. In section two, we start with a bit of a historic context of the plan itself and its origins and set the general direction for where the update is going. So this originated in nineteen eighty-one, and there were two major updates in eighty-seven and two thousand and four. In two thousand and four, contextually, was a response largely to increased subdivision and development activity and some of the housing relocations that were occurring coming from, from Cold Lake and moving houses onto, into Ardmore. While the population has remained relatively stable over the last fifteen years, there has been limited growth, not a lot of new beyond individual lots or individual developments, not a lot of significant multi-lot developments, no significant changes to the local context. So as we looked for the general direction and looking at some of the opportunities for incremental development or for future multi-lot subdivisions, there is opportunity for infill both within the, the fiftieth street core, Main Street core, as well as some vacant residential lots, lots that have already been zoned or identified for residential use. There are some opportunities for, for single lot developments or single family developments or for some small-scale multifamily-type developments. There is quite a, a bit of land that is available for new subdivision, new multi-lot subdivisions available, land that has already been identified for residential uses, and additional land that are outside of the, the main core of the community that could be transitioned into different types of development provided that the servicing infrastructure could accommodate that. And then there was also opportunity to look at additional commercial or light industrial types of development south of the highway to, again, to provide from that financial sustainability perspective, additional opportunities for mixture of uses, different types of uses that could sustain the tax base of the community and support all of the service delivery and, and future infrastructure expansions there. So again, building from the, the previous plan and some of the internal and external community engagements, look to establish a foundation around key aspirations for the future of the community and really focusing on maintaining Ardmore, the desirability of Ardmore as a, of the community and to retain and attract population. So while it's been stable, there is a school there, it's been looked at, and how do we make sure that we're able to use the plan itself, use the policies within the plan to support decisions that will retain the population there and retain the sustainability of the facilities that are helping drive the community, building on the local strengths of those facilities, and, but also considering the impacts of development on the character of the community. So there's a, a bit of a push and pull here that it's recognized that to maintain the sustainability and viability of that community and the facilities that are there over the long term, development is needed, but don't, not wanting to see development occur at the expense of the character of the community itself. So looking to increase development opportunities, but focusing on those infill areas and also on the areas that make it as easy as possible to extend the existing servicing before significant investment in expansion of the, the servicing networks that would be required. So the aspirations essentially represent some of the idealized future for the community and wanted to expand on those to establish a set of guiding principles that would recognize both the flexibility in the plan while also establishing direction for future decisions on growth and development that are ultimately going to, to come. So wanting to focus on retaining that character of the community while supporting development that enhances the viability of the community. So again, reinforcing the notion that development for development's sake is not what we want to look at. We want to explore opportunities for, for realistic, complementary development that is going to support the existing facilities, provide opportunities to expand some of the existing facilities and fit within the, the planned and existing infrastructure network and support systems. Continuing to support the, and strengthening the assets that are already in place that do contribute to that citizen retention and continuing to provide opportunities to attract citizens to the community itself, while also considering the financial implications of new development and really focusing those on infrastructure and service delivery needs and the financial obligations that would ultimately come to the M D. So using that as a, as a framework for helping to evaluate how new growth and development coming to Ardmore is ultimately going to impact the community, both from a positive perspective, but also understanding what the financial implications may be. So in section three, this establishes a general land use concept. Ultimately, this is to provide some structure and some guidelines for both the types and the location of different land uses, and it's really built around the categories that are presented here on the slide. So looking at opportunities to continue to identify areas for residential development, to identify an area that we've termed Main Street, so that's largely, a, a large portion of that fiftieth street corridor, and wanting to build, enhance, and expand on that corridor, recognizing that it has that, that Main Street capacity, it has that ability to, to be the center of the community, and it has a lot of available spaces for potential future expansion of, of commercial opportunities and, and development. Wanted to introduce an opportunity for light industrial and commercial development. We did identify an area for mixed use, and so this area was a recognition that it's not necessarily going to be entirely appropriate for either residential or commercial or industrial, but that there might be an opportunity, again, depending on the type, the scale of development, to, to attract difference, different sizes of residential uses based on, on the parcel sizes. There's public uses and recreation areas, those largely existing spaces and facilities that are in the community. And then there's a large area that we've termed reserved for future development, and this, these are the areas that are outside of the core of the community, largely in, in the west and northwestern portions of Ardmore that are essentially outside of the, the easier to service areas from a wastewater perspective. So with that concept or conceptual structure of the different land use categories, the map outlines where the types and locations of, of each land use would preside. Now, want to, to acknowledge in the front end that this is a guide for future development. This does not change any of the existing use, does not change the zoning, does not change what is allowed based on what's currently there. This is the guide that as development occurs or suggestions for changing the type of development on the existing site occur, we want to use this as the guide to help make those decisions of whether or not those are valid. So this in no way changes anything, it does not increase the value, decrease the value, change the tax structure of any existing use, it is there as a guide to help make decisions. So we've really focused the residential around the existing core of the community. So this general area here, and then the areas to the east of that as well. The, the Main Street corridor is this area in orange, so we look to maintain that existing area and expand it from the highway to just north, just north and along. area and expand it from the highway to just north, just north and along the golf course to explo- explore opportunities, again, not necessarily prescribed that that's exactly where this is going to go, but to give the the notion that we want to expand that corridor, we want to maintain that corridor as the core of the community. The green areas here are largely retaining the school, the arena site, the existing golf course as the key areas of for public use, knowing that there there is the arena there and that there are plans to expand on on the trail system. The areas to the south here are the opportunities for non-residential. Again, focus that south of the highway corridor to deal with some of those those land use conflicts and contiguous land use patterns and maintain some consistency between those areas. The area here between is where we've identified because of some of the larger lot development, not just blanketing that as either residential or commercial or industrial, but providing for some flexibility there to determine those, how those may apply more on a on a site-specific basis. And ultimately, what will help determine the suitability of any development that comes into these areas, whether they are defined as as one of the existing land use categories or whether they are part of this large blue area, which is reserved for future development, will be its relationship to how serviceable that is. And can this be reasonably serviced at a reasonable cost will determine at what point in time the larger blue lands have been identified for future expansion. So at this point, I do also want to acknowledge that through the advertisement of the public hearing, through the advertisement of the Ardmore Area Structure Plan, that it has come to planning and development's attention that there is the area here that has been identified as reserved for future development as part of the two thousand four Area Structure Plan. As part of that advertising and communication with the landowners, it was revealed that that had actually been changed to residential as part of a two thousand five change to the an update to the Area Structure Plan and a subsequent rezoning that had simply been missed. So this is something that we want to outline here, that we are completely amenable to working with the landowner based on council's direction as to how we want to address this. It was not specifically identified as resorting back from residential to reserved for future development. So had we not or had we had that that information on the residential side of things, we would have incorporated that into here. So there was no significant change from planning and development's perspective as to why that was resorted, we just had had missed that piece of information.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
That section of land, is that owned by the same person who owns the land just west of Fifty Second Street?
I don't know that specifically, I believe it's the the owners who who own this piece here own this piece here, so.
I assume that, is that true?
I I believe so, and I believe there's someone here to speak to that. So building on section three, there are policy sections, again, trying to align and connect all of the different areas of the plan through the the priorities that were identified, the different objectives and aspirations, as well as the guiding principles. Broken into four general sections, the first, just acknowledging that there are other orders of plans, other orders of regulations, both at the municipal level as well as provincial and federal levels, that outrank essentially the Area Structure Plan. So just referencing that, that while we have policy direction within here, there are other pieces that are in play as well. Looking at the enhancing of the community character and really focusing on maximizing the use of lands that can be serviced and focusing on strengthening the Main Street corridor, there's really two big push areas for policy in that section. Citizen retention being another key objective of of the plan. Maintaining, ensuring there's flexibility for housing options, so as people are are moving in or wanting to stay in the community, that there's reasonable flexibility to accommodate different housing options based on where different people are at in terms of their needs. But also focusing on continuing investment in the facilities, services, and assets that help maintain the viability of Ardmore and the retention of of citizens moving forward. And then on the financial sustainability side, looking at really focusing on incorporating a mix of land uses, a variety of different land uses that can support the financial viability of the community and demonstrate integration into the existing character of the community and connections to the existing servicing networks. And finally, as section four looks to outline how the plan is going to be administered. So one of the requirements of the Municipal Government Act is that there is a phasing phasing is acknowledged here, what we acknowledge within the plan, because there has been very little significant development activity occur since the adoption in two thousand four, that sequencing is largely going to be based on private sector. So there's nothing that the M D is going to put into there specifically that acknowledges different stages of development that you are going to direct, that as development looks to occur, what we will focus on through the policy and direction of the plan is how are we viewing this continuously to the existing built areas and the existing servicing connections? So we acknowledge there are considerable lands available for future growth, this was not something where the growth was outpacing the availability of land. And any proposal within those areas that are deemed reserved for future development would require future detailed planning around the servicing connections, any expansions that would be necessary, so to ensure that development approvals would not proceed until there was some clear determination of how that future development is going to connect to either existing infrastructure or how it is going to contribute to the expansion of the infrastructure necessary. Amendments themselves will follow the Municipal Government Act requirements, but they can be initiated either by the municipal district itself or by any member of the public or landowner that is within the Area Structure Plan area. Regardless of of any amendments, what we have identified in here is so that we don't get into a situation that we're we're not looking at this in the great detail contextually or changes to any of Landy's patterns between the initial adoption and now. We want to have at minimum a five-year window whereby this plan would be reviewed, not necessarily to this scale, going out to the significant lengths to to update, review, and amend, but to ensure that it remains relevant based on changes to your local context and based on changes to any of the other planning directions that you've put forward.
Mr. Reeve?
So that, that's the close of my formal words.
Yeah, just a question question for you, that's fine. Yeah. Your your depicted map of Ardmore there for land uses, there's just an area that's just north of Fifty First Avenue, it just said it's blue, it's all blue. It's actually, there's like seven developed lots in that blue area. Above that road, like above Fifty First Avenue, there's seven ser- shouldn't say developed lot, there's seven service lots, but not developed or by any means, so just wondering if that should have been maybe highlighted or changed?
Absolutely, taking note of that.
Yeah, it went along with that storm pond that was put in, so the owner of the land actually had some lots serviced, so it should be showing up as residential, not, I would assume. And my other comment, and I and I think you'd you'd probably agree to this one, the the highway, the property just north of the highway that we're seeing is red, so it's actually a mixed use. It always poses a problem when you mix residential and industrial, and so I don't know what your comments are there, but that, you know, it's mixed use because it's mixed use, it's probably, you know, if had we been smarter twenty-five years ago, we wouldn't have kind of allowed that, but now we have housing and industrial. So I just maybe your comments, I suppose?
Yeah, there was initial discussion about having that as entirely commercial or actually the light industrial area, the purple area is extending all the way up. And again, based on some learnings from other plans, other decisions that have been made, putting putting that industrial north of the highway became somewhat problematic. So we wanted to have a separation from using the highway as a separator between what the more intense non-residential developments were with the the community itself, recognizing that that area in and of itself already has its own unique circumstances. So we didn't want to then just revert that back to entirely residential, we wanted to put some form of of flexibility within there, but still providing guidelines. So again, so it's not just a anything goes, it's a mixture of uses, but there's guidelines within the plan itself, and there'll be references to the land use bylaw itself as to how does it actually make sense relative to its relationship to adjacent land uses to the north, to the south, how it relates to the highway, how it relates to accessibility. So it it has a series of of criteria that would have to to go through in order to determine whether or not that particular development is reasonable for that area. By putting a mixed use designation, it doesn't mean we're just opening it up to to anything and everything.
Yeah, and but your comment that kind of struck me wrong is you said not it's not residential, like I don't think it should have been, it's highway commercial, it should have been light industrial or commercial, not residential, it just grew that way because of applications. It's when it applies for a house, we we said, sure, put a house there, but then you get other things going in there that are.
Yeah, no, that's fair.
Kind of counter counterintuitive to that, but anyway, thanks.
All right, thank you. Any any other questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. I guess there is one written submission that will be addressed by a presenter that attends today, so I'm just gonna reach out and see if there's any presenters that want to support. Is this correct, support this this morning? Uh speaking of, if there's anyone here that wants to support this? Nope. Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Okay, seeing none, I'm just wondering if there's any presenters here in opposition? Okay, welcome. Are you here on behalf of yourself or a group?
On behalf of a company. And I'll I'll just identify that company in a moment, if that's all right.
So you'll you'll have ten minutes, sir.
Okay, thanks very much. So morning, Mr.
Sorry, is that correct, sir? Okay, sorry, you have five minutes, sir.
An individual as opposed to, it would be to attend for who?
Sorry, I just asking if you're presenting for a group or for an individual?
Well, I suppose it might be considered a group, a corporation, Woodbridge Homes. Anyways, I'm sorry, I I please indulge me because I I may go a little bit over, nobody told me that there was a a time cap, but I'll I'll try to be as brief as I can.
All right, we'll go with ten minutes. Sure, thank you.
Thanks so much, Reeve Kalinsky.
Yes.
Councillors, members of the public, my name is Julian Savrin, I'm with Kenny Law. We're counsel to Woodhaven Developments Inc. and Woodbridge Homes Inc., who I will refer to simply as Woodbridge, the owner of the lands in the hamlet of Ardmore with the short legal title four four sixty-two two southeast. I'm I'm sure many of you are familiar, perhaps all of you are familiar with these lands, which are comprised of fifty-six acres located adjacent to and west of Fifty Second Street in Ardmore and to the south of Fiftyth Avenue. I'll I'll identify these lands on a map in a moment. Actually, perhaps we could pull up tab three on page twenty. We've been looking at that, which is figure seven of the proposed area structure plan. So the lands at issue, councillor Swigert, you you were asking Mr. Ulmer previously whether it's the same owner, I I can have, I can respond and be affirmative, it is indeed that entire parcel, which is partially blue, partially ochre, I guess, in this map. So my purpose in attending today's public hearing is to urge council to revise this this figure seven. So as not to rezone a a significant portion of the Woodbridge lands. I I heard Mr. Ulmer saying a few moments ago that this map is merely a guide and that it's not purporting to rezone anything. I I I'm afraid I I have a different interpretation, which is supported by some historical actions of this council in two thousand and five, where the two thousand and four Area Structure Plan was in fact revised to, and I quote, rezone the Woodbridge lands. So we're doing, this is, this exercise is a bit of a do-over, unfortunately. I I'm I'm afraid that I I didn't hear before today's public hearing that that the M D didn't have a problem going back to having all of the Woodbridge lands being zoned residential. So with that, I'll I'll try to I'll try to curtail my submissions to some extent, but again, please indulge me because I I arrived here anticipating the M D was in fact opposed to having all of the Woodbridge lands continue their zoning as residential. So with that, under the proposed ASP, roughly a third, as you can see, of the Woodbridge lands would continue to be zoned residential, two-thirds roughly would be rezoned reserved for as a future development. And again, i- in our submission, the designation as reserved for future development would amount to a substantial change. The proposed Area Structure Plan makes it clear that, and I'm quoting here, this classification does not imply suitability for future development, nor does it ensure any development proposal will be approved. And you'll find that on page eighteen of this document, which we don't need to go to, but that description and that re- new classification as reserved for future development is a far cry from residential. By way of background, I'll review some of the key events of the past twenty years in respect of the Woodbridge lands. So bylaw thirteen oh one, which received third reading on January eighth, two thousand and four, had the effect of adopting the twenty, the two thousand and four Area Structure Plan, which I'll call the two thousand four ASP. Originally, the two thousand and four ASP designated the eastern one-third portion of the Woodbridge lands as future residential development, and the remaining Woodbridge lands were rezoned agricultural lands, in some ways similar to what we've got up on the screen right now, but a lot has taken place since two thousand and four, and most notably some rezoning, which was accomplished by three bylaws separately, and I'll I'll review those in just a moment. So in March of two thousand and four, Sheffer Andrew drafted an outline plan of what they called Ardmore Meadows, which provided a development concept to create two hundred and eighty-eight residential lots on the Woodbridge lands. And we see that on, if you if we can pull up tab seven, page three, which is D two ten at the bottom there. Just a few more pages. Just at the bottom there, yeah. So if you'll see, under under area, section four, development concept, so the development concept was to create two hundred and eighty-eight residential lots of various sizes. In its analysis, Sheffer Andrew recognized that the lands would need to be rezoned from agricultural district to the new residential small lot land use district. And if we keep on going to to twenty, another ten pages, you'll see that the two thousand and four Sheffer outline plan included in it a master structural plan for the entire fifty-six acres of the Woodbridge lands. You'll see, this is, I I apologize for the orientation, it should be flipped, but in any event, the you'll see that there is a master structural plan for the entire fifty-six acres. Sheffer Andrew subsequently applied to amend the two thousand and four ASP for the designation of the western two-thirds portion of the Woodbridge lands from agricultural to future residential. On December seventh, two thousand and four, John Foy wrote to Andrew Sheffer advising that this proposed amendment, and I quote, "is in keeping with the growth plans for the hamlet," end quote. And accordingly, the Municipal Planning Commission, and again, I quote, "is recommending to council to proceed with the required bylaw amendment." And this is found at tab nine, document ID two eighty-four. Well, that's being pulled up, I'll just carry on. So then on February twenty-fourth, two thousand and five, bylaw L U two twenty-four received third reading and was passed. And this bylaw rezoned the balance of the Woodbridge lands from agricultural land to future residential development. Okay, so this is the letter from John Foy, and you'll see. Okay, so this is the letter from John Foy, and you'll see, you'll see the language there that the proposed amendment is in keeping with the growth plans for the hamlet and that the municipal pl- planning commission is recommending to council to proceed with the required bylaw amendment. Now, if we could, thanks so much. Maybe if we can keep this document handy, because I'll refer to it again, but if we could now go to tab five, I'm sorry, my mistake. Oh, no, that's right, tab five, document ID one twenty-five, it's just, just the second page there. If we can zoom in to the highlighted portion. So you'll see here that, just where we are, that figure two, future land use concept be amended such that part, and I won't read it out, but that's, that's the Woodbridge lands, be rezoned from agricultural land to future residential development to be given second reading, and then below that, it's given third reading. And so this is why I take exception to the suggestion by Mr. Ulmer that this map wouldn't have the effect of rezoning the lands. In fact, it would, and at least it was considered by this council to have that effect back in two thousand and five. So reversing the, changing the map is, in our submission, very significant. And if we can also pull up tab nine, two eighty-three, doc ID two eighty-three, so that'll just be a little lower. Oh, yeah, just one page, right. So you can see, this is, if we scroll up just a tiny bit, you'll see that this was amended from agricultural land to future residential development. So this was the, this is by law two twenty-four, which was passed in two thousand and five. So subsequent to this, on May nineteenth, two thousand and five, a public hearing was held at which by law number two thirty-four received second hearing. Our understanding is that that by law was ultimately, ultimately passed as well, which had the effect of rezoning another portion of the Woodbridge lands from Hamlet Urban Reserve to Hamlet Residential H R one. In any event, later that year, John Foy wrote to Sheffer Andrew advising that a further rezoning application was granted with the passage of by law number LU two fifty-seven on December eighth, two thousand and five, which rezoned portions of the Woodbridge lands from H R one to H R two. And this, uh, this was confirmed again as recently as June twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen, in a memorandum to file of the M.D. of Bonneville regarding the Woodbridge lands, which indicates that by law LU two fifty-seven was indeed passed upon third reading on December eighth, two thousand and five, rezoning a portion of the Woodbridge lands from H R one to H R two. And I, I won't ask for it to be put up on the screen, but this is, that memorandum is included in our submissions. Then on November tenth, two thousand and eight, the M.D. of Bonneville conditionally approved Wood, Woodbridge's subdivision application for nineteen residential lots. This subdivision application included Andrew Sheffer's master structural plan for the entire fifty-six acres. A further subdivision application was conditionally approved on July twelfth, two thousand and eleven. Pursuant to this subdivision application and relying upon the M.D.'s approval of the master structural plan covering the entire fifty-six acres of the Woodbridge lands, Woodbridge paid a hundred and eighty-five thousand to the M.D. of Bonneville on June eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen, for the cost of twenty services and connections and an increase of water line to twenty-five millimeters from twenty millimeters to, to lots on the west side of Fifty-Second Street in Ardmore. Woodbridge's subdivision application was extended until July twelfth, two thousand and sixteen, when it ultimately lapsed. I don't propose to get into that, at the circumstances of why that happened, that's currently before the courts. But what is relevant to today's public hearing is that since February twenty-fourth, two thousand and five, with the passage of LU, by law LU two two four, up until the present, the Woodbridge lands have been zoned as residential. And the proposed ASP would improperly do away with the significant work that Woodbridge and the M.D. of Bonneville engaged in to rezone the Woodbridge lands as residential in two thousand and five. It would also be contrary to what Mr. Foy represented to Woodbridge in his correspondence of December seventh, two thousand and four, when he advised that the residential zoning is, again, I quote, "in keeping with the growth plans for the hamlet." Now, uh, in the interest of time, I'll, I'll try to condense my, the rest of my submissions here. There is a process that is mandated by section one ninety-one of the Municipal Government Act, and that process, that, that provision, section one ninety-one, one ninety-one provides that amendment or repeal must be made in the same way as the original by law and is subject to the same consents or conditions or advertising requirements that apply to the passing of the original by law. So that, that has not been followed, that process has not been followed. I gather it, it was just an error, so I, again, I, I indulge me because, because I, I was expecting that this was, right, I, my understanding was that this was being done deliberately. I understand from Mr., Mr. Ulmer, that this was done just in error. So if, if that's the case, that's fine, and let's just, let's just correct the error. But, I mean, if, if it was gonna be the case, if the M.D. was gonna take the position that indeed they wanted to rezone this, there is a different process which hasn't been followed. So I, I, I just highlight that fact, it's a, it's an important legal point. And I, again, I, I have other, I had other submissions in, in respect of the requirement of good faith, both on the part of council and the part of counselors, but I, I'll just reserve those submissions. Again, I, I take it this was done in error. If that's the case, let's just fix it and move on. So I, I won't, I won't belabor the point. Just in, in closing, we are, Woodbridge is not asking for something extraordinary. In fact, we're not asking for anything new. Woodbridge merely seeks to maintain the current residential zoning of the Woodbridge lands under the new ASP, the new area structure plan, and submits that council must revise figure seven, found on page twenty of the proposed ASP, which we've seen, to reflect that all of the Woodbridge lands remain zoned residential. And it is my, our, our submission that this change to figure seven needs to be made in order to comply with the requirements of the Municipal Government Act, and those are my respectful submissions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Mr. Reeve, I'll just probably comment, I, I think it was probably just a mistake in the color or whatever, but just as it was just north of Fifty-first Avenue, that's also residential, and is that being?
Maybe we could pull that up, the map?
But, but that's, that's fine. And I think we get it, I, I, the thing about good faith, I, I, I'm a little concerned because, uh, Woodbridge has owned that land for over forty years, and, and we've been hoping for development west, and can you tell me what's going on?
Yeah, there's ain't a time or place for that.
No, I suppose, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there's ain't, thank you.
All right. I'm happy, I'm happy to speak to you.
Shouldn't be no questions back and forth. He does his presentation, that's, that's it.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
No, that's fine.
But if you guys want to get together later on or something, and you want to ask a question, that'd be fun.
Happy to, happy to engage by all means.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, counselors and Mr. Reeve.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? In opposition of this? Again, I'll ask if anyone else wants to speak, speak in opposition of this? Okay, seeing none, just need some clarification. We're just gonna go on to the Cherry Grove one, we're not gonna end this, we'll end it together, or we have to end it now?
We'll need a motion to close this public hearing and open a new one for the next, that's correct.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to end, yeah?
I'll make a motion to close public hearing, or add more structure plan.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, Counselor Sutrick, for making a motion. On behalf of council, that public hearing is closed at ten fifty-five a.m. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Okay, Carrie, we're gonna take five minutes again, and then if you want to ask some questions there, Dana, go ahead, and whoever wants.
Before we begin with public hearing, I'd like your line.
Those who wish to address any of the public hearing on today's agenda to register your name on the speaker's list at the entrance of the council chambers, that's been done. I would also like to outline the process of the following for this public hearing. We will begin with staff report for administration, followed by questions of administration from council. We will then call upon members of the public who wish to speak in support of the application, followed by those who wish to speak opposition of the application. Council may ask questions of public presenter during this time only. Finally, we will entertain any final questions from administration from council before the closing public hearing. May I have a motion to open public hearing? Motion? Thank you, Counselor Kravjak, for making a motion on behalf of council that public hearing for item four-two be opened at eleven oh two a.m. Any discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote. Carrie? Good morning, Ms. Quinwell.
Good morning. Pursuant to the MGA, before giving second reading to a proposed bylaw for the adoption of an area structure plan, council must hold a public hearing. Therefore, Chris Ulmer of Urban Systems, on behalf of the M.D. of Bonneville, will be presenting an overview and summary of the Cherry Grove area structure plan. Bylaw number eighteen oh five, Cherry Grove area structure plan was given first reading at the August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two council meeting. Attached in this report for council's review is a copy of the proposed bylaw eighteen oh five, and as well as the attached amended Cherry Grove area structure plan. An appendix B, ministerial order number three oh seven eight eight, Cherry Grove structure plan, which was completed in nineteen eighty-eight, as well an appendix C, a copy of the presentation about to be provided by Mr. Ulmer. So with that, I would like to invite Chris to come forward and provide council with some information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Esther, and thank you again, council. This one will be a bit briefer, without the, the same preamble as, as what we just heard on the, on the Ardmore. Did want to talk a little bit in terms of the differentiation, as we looked at the purpose and authority and rationale for update, again, from, from changes to the context and MGA, but building from the, the previous plan, from the Cherry Grove, and looking at some of the, the main objectives is one, it's a bit of a different context out there, and really looking at the, the rural lifestyle and retaining and encouraging that. Looking at compatible infill development opportunities, but also recognizing that there are different types of, of development constraints there because of the servicing, or lack of servicing opportunities. But again, providing guidance for development decision. And within the Cherry Grove concept, because of the nature of, of the large-scale development and the servicing restrictions, would there be an opportunity to explore development lands outside of what is currently defined within the hamlet boundary? So similar to the Ardmore engagement process, we did invite the community to, to attend a session where we again provided opportunities to review the draft and discuss any changes from their perspective around what remains priorities for the Cherry Grove community. Some of the priority themes that came forward were maintaining the, the rural nature of the community, the natural qualities. Could we find ways to accommodate businesses that support the community, retaining and maintaining housing options across the spectrum, recognizing there are different types of housing in Cherry Grove that support more senior-type housing options? How could we continue to maintain that so people could live within the community throughout a greater percentage of their lifespan? Focusing on the community facilities and the community spaces that act as the focal point for the community itself, and ways that we could leverage assets in the spaces and facilities to support, build community events and support the, the overall viability and sustainability of Cherry Grove as a hamlet. On the contextual side of things, there's no source for the population similar to Ardmore. This is not a hamlet that is tracked through the federal census. The last time a census was done was by the municipal district in two thousand and fourteen. At that point in time, it was estimated there's four hundred and fifteen residents from the municipal district's perspective. There'd only been three residential development permits that came forward since that time. And anecdotally, talking with the community, it still seems that there is a, a stable population and a diverse population with people of, of different age spectrums, but there's no official population count. However, most of the lots seem to be, to be filled and lived in. The area itself, within the existing hamlet boundary, is largely built out. There are some vacant lands in a previously planned subdivision that was put forward as Cherry Hill Estates that was only partially built on the eastern part of the hamlet boundary itself. Overall, the hamlet within the current boundary has a limited carrying capacity, largely because of lack of municipal services in the area. There are some natural constraints, whether that is the water table, soil conditions, and slopes do limit some of the developable areas within the hamlet. There are some physical constraints due to some setbacks from an old landfill that creates some barriers for development in, in those areas for residential purposes, and an old service station that may have some soil contamination. There are some other physical aspects of any future development, and this was largely tied to the build-out of Cherry Hill Estates, that if there were to, if that were to build out and expand the, the capacity based on what was originally proposed by another forty-five lots, I believe, then there would be some review required at the intersections of the highway, just to ensure that there is adequate turn lanes, access and egress provided. Terms of the general direction and historic context of the plan, this is originally adopted in nineteen eighty-three, when this was adopted under improvement district number eighteen. It was amended in nineteen eighty-eight by the municipal district and was retained as the, the area structure plan until now, until the, this review. So again, similar to Ardmore, we took the, the approach to build from the original community context, understanding there had been limited growth in the area, that there, a lot of the growth was, was reserved for single lot, large lot developments with onsite servicing. And there are, were limitations based on the size and, and scale of available lands other than the, the opportunities within Cherry Hill Estates. So that constraint in and of itself led to expanding the area structure plan area for review, to look at areas outside the existing boundary, to explore whether there would be opportunities for different types of development to occur within the area, recognizing that the plan would largely say otherwise, there was only one area for new development, and it was all going to be focused around residential. So that was the direction that we were taking in terms of looking for areas and lands outside of the existing boundary. So in terms of the, the aspirational side for, for looking at the future and, and direction of the plan, the quality of life is a, a very significant factor, particularly relative to the natural areas and the contribution the natural areas make to the, the quality of life and the character of the community, and maintaining that rural, very small community lifestyle. There was an appetite, and seems to be an appetite, for other types of development, but that would be complementary to the community so that there was opportunity for people to live and whether that's have different employment, but more so shopping opportunities. There was a lot of comments about previous opportunities with, with stores that have been in place before, recognizing we're in a different world, but could we look at at least opportunities to explore that within the context of the plan? And as I mentioned earlier, due to the nature of the large, or the limited carrying capacity and largely built-out nature of the existing boundary, were there opportunities to explore complementary development outside of the, the boundary itself? So building on the aspirations, wanted to explore again guiding principles, as we did in Ardmore, to explore maintaining some flexibility, but ensuring that there is direction within the plan on how decisions get made for any planning and development decisions that have come before you. So from a overall principle perspective, retaining the character of the community and, and the na- the natural lifestyle there, recognizing there are opportunities for compatible development, building on local assets as a focal point, there's a significant concentration with the arena, the community center, the church, the park, the, the multifamily development, a strong focal point, and really leveraging those opportunities to maintain that, that community core, and a real focus on environmental stewardship, both from a perspective that it provides a quality of life, it's a significant contributor to why people choose to live there, why they enjoy living there, and how that contributes to the character of the community, but also from a health and safety perspective, because of the lack of municipal infrastructure. from a health and safety perspective, because of the lack of municipal infrastructure, because of the soil and water conditions that need to be addressed from an onsite servicing perspective, and also the fire smart aspects. Because of the significant tree cover, the environmental stewardship was a significant component of the policy direction to ensure that any type of development applies to all of the different aspects from the environmental perspective that contribute to the health and safety of the community. So we've also provided a general land use concept, again, to provide structure and guide future land use decisions. We've broken it down for the Cherry Grove from a residential component, again, different because it's largely going to be a large lot until there is any different type of servicing available there, looking at some commercial opportunities that are directly along the transportation corridor, the main highway, some areas south of the highway that could be appropriate for light industrial, maintaining the areas for public use and space that are already designated as the community facilities and park spaces and municipal reserves, and then a natural area that largely applies to a water boundary, water body along the eastern boundary of the area structure plan area. So those different residential types break down into, again, a future land use map. And I know I've mentioned this earlier, and there was some question as to the validity, but the map itself does not change the zoning. And so I do want to reinforce that. This is a guide for future development, as somebody wants to make a change to their particular lands in question, they would use the plan to either support or not support that particular change. So this is a guide, if somebody wants to explore what they want to do, this would help determine whether or not this is suitable, based on the guidelines and criteria that are put in the different policy sections. From residential development, it continues to be driven by large-lot residential development. The area in question that I've mentioned, Cherry Hill Estates, is this area here. So this is, these are the only lots that were built out or subdivided, and this area has been or remains under another area structure plan that looks at the ultimate build-out of that area. So there is opportunity for future growth within here, but other than that, it's fairly limited because of either the topography or just the built-out nature of the community. A large focal point here, again, on some of the recreational spaces and uses, and then looking to the south, this being the rodeo grounds as the exception, but ultimately looking at commercial opportunities, there's limited residential potential because of the old landfill site here, creating some of those setback boundaries that would limit the types of development that could go. But also, there are significant environmental features in this area as well. So while we've identified this as development potential for either commercial or light industrial uses, it would go through a very rigorous development review process to determine which parts of those areas are actually suitable for development. So just because it's identified here as potential on the future land use concept, it does not mean it is developable. It would require, both from an environmental impact, but also from the servicing requirements, and how the onsite servicing, both from water and wastewater, could be accommodated to support that development. Similarly, we have the policy sections that are intended to connect and align throughout the plan, building the overall objectives, priorities, and aspirations together. The general, again, recognizing there are higher-order plans and regulations at all levels of government. The existing sense of place, really focusing policy direction on maintaining the unique sense of place and the rural character of the community, the natural character of the community, sustaining that focal point as the core of the community, and finding ways to leverage the existing assets to support the retention of the population, and continue to act as an attraction for others looking to move to the area, and maintaining the environmental focus with the natural areas as both amenities and the environmental functions that they provide, based on the onsite servicing requirements, and respecting the natural areas and the servicing constraints that are put forward. As with Ardmore, the administration of the plan and the sequencing and phasing of development is largely dictated by private sector interests and private sector pursuit of planning and development opportunities. This is not something that the municipal district is driving and assigning timelines for any new growth or development. The Cherry Hill Estates is an area that already has essentially planning approvals in place from an area structure plan and a zoning perspective. It would require continued exploration of the onsite servicing requirements from a soil capacity to accommodate that, but those are areas that, based on the amount of growth that has occurred and the contextual changes in the community, there's significant area that could accommodate quite a significant amount of housing there. And then the amendments are, again, governed by the Municipal Government Act itself. There is a process that would be required for the municipal district to follow to make any amendments to this plan, but any amendment can be initiated by either the municipal district or members of the public. And similar to Ardmore, from a contextual change perspective, there would be a five-year review period put as part of the overall administration of the plan itself, so that we ensure that these are relevant and up to date as the times change. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Any quick questions? Yes?
You mentioned setbacks from all the landfill sites. What is that setback?
It is three hundred meters from the landfill site for any residential development, and I believe there's a four hundred meter setback for any water well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Okay, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm going to ask if there's any present, anyone, a presentation here to support this? Again, I'll ask if anyone's here to support this? Okay, seeing nobody here, I'm wondering if there's anyone to present in opposition. Thank you, come up, sir. You'll have five minutes.
Okay. I'm Frank Mayer. I'm also representing Ron Taylor and Roscoe Wiseman. We are the three property owners that is depicted in blue, that they want to propose that it becomes a commercial area. We've discussed it as a group, and we've kind of looked at it going, we're asking why. We've got two agricultural and one residential, all in those three properties. The property to the west of that is Charlie White, and it kind of goes around his agricultural property, and it looks like it's divided into half. Now, I know there's environmental issues with the landfill site, but our two major concerns is why was it depicted the way it was? And the other one is if it becomes, if it's adopted, and we try to subdivide, which I can subdivide on my, because I live right in the middle property, I can subdivide and still be without the environmental, I'm within the three hundred or four hundred meters of the old landfill, because my residence right now is in that spot. I'd just like to say, I think we need to relook at what you guys, what is proposed for commercial land in the hamlet of Cherry Grove, and I have no objections to us becoming part of the hamlet of Cherry Grove, since we live on the south side of the highway. We've never been a part of that, and I think that's a great idea, but I think we need to look at what needs to be proposed as more commercial land, or what can be used as commercial land in the near future.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Have a great day. I'll ask again if anyone else wants to speak in opposition. Okay, I'll ask one more time if anyone wants to speak in opposition to this. Okay, well, then I need a motion to go on a public hearing. Let's move by Councilor Swigert on behalf of council that the public hearing for item four-two be closed at eleven twenty-two AM. Thank you. Yes, I do. Any discussion? Seeing none? Call for the vote? Oh, sorry, there is some discussion?
Just a little confused if we were allowed to have questions or not about this.
Not to the people present.
Not to the people present.
If you want to ask a question to Esther, I believe you can. Is that correct? Al, is that correct?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. Public hearings are designed to allow public and residents and any affected person to speak directly to council, whether they're for or opposed. Questions can be asked, but it is entirely incumbent upon council when they ask those questions to ensure that they're not asking a question based on a bias, that they're purely just seeking information. That's the point of the public hearing, is purely to seek information regarding, regarding the application or the area structure plan, or whatever the matter is that's before it. So there will be, it will be coming back after public hearing for second and third reading, so there will be a much more opportunity for questions as well through second and third reading.
I'll ask questions later, then.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on this? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Carrie. We'll have time for one delegation, maybe, before dinner? Yeah, five-one Cherry Grove Recreation Agricultural Society. Morning. Come on up, sorry, we just went a little longer than we were attending.
Well, that's okay. Morning, guys. I am Natalie Hamilton. I am the Cherry Grove head of the hall committee and the booking agent for the Cherry Grove Agriculture Act Society.
My name is Joseph Burge, Vice President of Cherry Grove Agriculture Society as well.
We are here today to talk about our submission to increase our annual operating grant that we receive at twenty-five thousand dollars, and asking if it can be increased to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually. If you go to page one twenty-nine, you have appendix A, it's our summary letter to the council, where we just quickly explained that we are a nonprofit act society that is run by volunteer-based members of the community, and that we are looking to be considered for the hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually as a Glendon Agricultural Society, as they have an operating grant. And the purpose of this proposal is to help the community to continue to grow, improve, and maintain infrastructure, and to continue to provide community functions and support. The desperate need for this grant is we have some immediate permanent maintenance that needs to be fixed, not just bandied it over. We have a leak in our north roof, which has now leaked into and caused some water damage into the north bathrooms in the side of the hall. We have a water system that needs replacing, and we have to figure out if we can replace the new water system, or if we have to get a cistern or whatnot, but what we're looking at is that we have high iron in Cherry Grove, and that has provided some damage to the pipes, and therefore the sinks, and the dishwasher, and all the bathroom stalls that need constant maintenance. But because of them, we have broken toilets and taps that aren't working as efficiently as they should. Another immediate thing that we need to look at fixing are the furnaces, the water heaters, and the water softeners, as they are over their life expectancy and do need to be done. At the bottom of this page, we then talk about the rodeo grounds, how we are improving and increasing our events that are happening there. We now have our annual lawn tractor races that are put on by volunteers, and for the last three years of hosting these, we've had somewhere between fifty and a hundred guests at the, or attendees at the first one. We now have over five hundred attendees who came to this last one just this past month. And then we are increasing our attendance with Jim Kanna and community support by community members using the rodeo grounds. And then we have, on the next page, we talk about our rink that we were so lucky and fortunate to get, and the rink expenses that we've had are pretty low because it's brand-new, but we are looking at potentially having a toe behind Samboni, which would improve the ice surfaces. And then in the summertime, so that rink is constantly used, other than public and private rental events, we'd like to look into having retractable basketball nets for the youth and anybody in the community area. We have worked hard at maintaining the infrastructure. We, in the last five years, have had a change in the board, and so with that comes an influx of new volunteers, an influx of new energy, and ideas that come to the community, but because of this change that has happened more recently, we have a lot more excitement from community members, and we have more people renting the hall, we have people who are looking to rent and utilize the rink as much as they can, and with us noticing and coming in and cleaning more, we have noticed the maintenance issues that we have. And so we are trying to have a higher standard of cleanliness and how the hall functions just on its own for operation, and with that comes a considerate cost.
So getting into the cost part, in a nutshell, we've done quotes through the Lakeland area with roofing companies, anywhere from eighty thousand to a hundred thousand dollar repair cost for the roof alone on the hall itself, and like Natalie said, we have one set of bathrooms now that are closed down, because we got too much water damage in there, and this hall has never been upgraded as it is, so I mean, it needs a makeover as well to keep it updated for rental purchases, as well as Mr. Elmer was talking about as the developing purposes. It would be a lot more beneficial for us all if we had a little bit more refreshing on it. I come from a construction background to touch on the water. To put a water cistern in there, which would be fantastic, but we don't have city water coming to Cherry Grove yet, hopefully, we're looking at roughly sixty to eighty thousand dollars just to install a cistern big enough to accommodate the fire suppression plan and the sprinkler system, and to sustain the hall use as well. So I mean, in a nutshell, it's in dire need of a heck of an upgrade for just to maintain it, to be able to keep using it. As busy as we are, our last year's schedule was swamped with rental uses for our hall, the arena, which, like Natalie said, was just great, it's made it huge. Everybody that's rented has been, they're saying it's a hell of a venue to have there when you have the hall, the arena, whole thing mixed and populated there, so it's really good that way. As far as the rodeo grounds, we're actually talking, we want to move our infield, I don't know if you guys are familiar, on the rodeo grounds, there's a big steel building there that's pretty much just a storage center right now. We're in the works of actually moving our whole infield from the north side of the track to the south side of the track, to utilize that steel building, put in flushable toilets, a canteen in there, as well as a dance floor, possibly to entertain live bands in there. To make it more acceptable, we also, we're working, like, next year, we've already got the chuck wagons and ponychucks coming back tentatively next July, so which is huge for the Cherry Grove area alone, so it's going, that alone is going to bring in a lot of people, and they're going to see the tight-knit community there, because it's all run by volunteers. Every bit of that hall has been ran by volunteers. We don't have any expandable money. Everything that we've done to the hall, the rodeo grounds, and everything has all been out of our own hands. You know, and a twenty-five thousand dollar operating budget per year is very miniscule, it'll barely keep the lights and the gas going in that place. My wife's the treasurer on the board, and we're looking at anywhere from eleven to fifteen hundred dollar gas bill. So to upgrade the furnaces to a high-grade furnace, I couldn't even imagine what that would be, you're looking at probably forty, fifty thousand dollars to increase the cost or the efficiency of our hall for furnaces that way, and then our water softener system as well, since we can't put a cistern in, that's just not feasible, to put in a new water system. not feasible, to put in a new water system for, to make it more sustainable for not so much iron and rust and all that. Because I know I've personally fixed a lot of the plumbing in there myself with broken pipes. We had a hall function and next thing you know, we had a water blowout. So, I had to run down home harder and grab some copper fittings and fix them myself, so... That's all we're asking. We need the money to actually keep this place going. It's, we're the only hall, I believe, in Alberta during COVID that kept things going there too. So, I mean, it's the heart and soul that's going into that community is definitely there. We're pushing to keep it going. We want to make Cherry Grove for what it is. I grew up there my whole life and Natalie's been there your whole life, haven't you?
No, ten years.
Ten years, sorry. Let's be good align, but...
She's pretty young.
Yeah.
I'm granding.
But, so, that's forty-two years. I was there when it used to be Little Cherry Grove, Little Britches Rodeo. I myself rode a sheep in the rodeo there, so I mean, that's what we want to bring back. But obviously, it takes money to, that's what we're asking, is to be able to sustain that to make the whole development grow.
So, the rest of the submissions that we made, just talk about events that we've had, continued in Appendix B on page one-thirty-two. We talked about like the ballroom, the big things that we've noticed and how we're working closely with our cleaner. And then further down, we have our one, three, and five-year goal from the Hall Committee's perspective. We know that if we got this grant, we can't just use it all in one year and just do everything we need because there's other committees in the, on the board that also need attention for ourselves, which I'd like to be, we can't do that. But then Appendix C is the rodeo grounds and their five-year goals, that you guys can see how active we are trying to continue to grow. Appendix D is current and upcoming events, so just for a quick, quick summary of everything, we have a Makerspace program. This started during COVID. It was a bunch of homeschool moms who got together, followed the COVID protocols, but they tried to run a support group for homeschool parents and kids. They loved it. It transitioned into the year after and it grew. We now have twenty children who are registered to start in October for that. We have our annual fall fair, which is coming up next week, if anybody would like to attend. It's gonna be real fun. And then in the evening of that one, we have our Cherry Palooza. It's our very first local-supported concert. We have three local bands coming, we have food trucks. Everything is local because we're trying to highlight all of the local and the amazingness that is Cherry Grove in the Cold Lake Bonneville area. We have yoga that is supported by an FCSS grant. We have cooking classes for family members, for parents to do with, just parents, for parents and children. Last year, we hosted our very first trunk-or-treat. It's exactly what it sounds like. We had a volunteer sign up. She was amazing. It was, her entire idea was because everybody is so sprawled out, a lot of members haven't in the community have not had trick-or-treaters for over twenty years, so they came, they decorated the backs of their car, they handed out candy that way, and we had over a hundred and fifty parents and kids attend that one for the first one and we have anticipated two hundred plus for this next one coming up in October. And then we started doing an Easter thing, which a lot of families like because it added a new, exciting way to their Easter things. On page one-thirty-six, we talk about how we recently regained back the Cherry Grove Big Butt Committee. They were, they changed their name to the Lakeland Sportsman Committee. They wanted to come back because they realized they went a little too big. They had over six hundred people attend their annual event, which is fantastic, but they started to, they felt like they were losing their community feel, so they came back to Cherry Grove and want to host it there and turn it into an even bigger event with them. And then we have a Pi Day, which is just a big fundraiser because we are shorter on funds. We wanted to find a fun way to support, feed the community, but hopefully get enough funds to keep things going. There's a spot on page one-thirty-seven talking about the dances that we wanted to host, but we weren't able due to volunteers over the summer, so we have some planned for the fall. And then we have a dinner at the hall, as you can see up there, where we wanted to have dinners once a month, have community members come in, have karaoke or quiz nights, feed them as another fundraiser. We want to grow our Canada Day celebrations. We have been having indoor markets. These have been quarterly and they have been huge. I've been the lucky person to organize them. We have one coming up this Saturday. It's supporting small businesses and local vendors throughout the area and even go into Pearseland. They come, they have everything open, they advertise for themselves and we have over two hundred community members attend these things. And then we had our very first community garage sale back in June, which a lot of the community members loved because, one, it was in the rink and it was raining and they were covered and, two, they didn't have to have random people show up at their house, so they felt safe and secure. So, we have over twenty families signed up for next year's garage sale. And then we have a potential breakfast with Santa. That's exactly what it sounds like for December. On page one-thirty-eight, we talk about Hutterite orders. There was a couple, Adele and Lanny Law in Cherry Grove. They started ordering chickens from the Hutterites twenty years ago approximately. They recently left and she called saying that she didn't want to leave community members high and dry with no chickens or turkeys at turkey season, so the hall volunteers took it over and we had our very first order last month received and we have a turkey order coming next month. There's...
There was over two thousand?
Yeah, there were over two thousand chickens, which all looked like miniature turkeys. And then we have a Cherry Grove Awards Night. That is hosted on November fifth. This is to give back to the community. It's not necessarily a fundraiser. It's to say thank you to all the volunteers, to all the companies and the businesses who have supported us over the last five years and just say thank you for the financial support, volunteer support to help us keep going, because if not, we wouldn't be able to do any of the things we've listed or anything that we've been able to do the last forty-something years. Further down, we talk about the lawn tractor races, which we've already covered, the skating rink has been a huge welcome thing. We have had members from, I had members from Ardmore call last year, I had people from Pearseland call, I had some schools call to see if it was open, to see if they could come in the wintertime for their classes. It was used, it was loved and people are really excited to use it and we've had a couple weddings, two or three this summer, who were able to host some of their wedding in there and they were so grateful for it and think it was amazing. We talk quickly, like a little bit about Jim Kanna, they're increasing their activities in 2023 and as Joe said, we've got the wagons and the rough stock for further rodeo ground events, plans for all of that. And then in the rest of the submission, we have our annual minutes, our financial statements, and that's pretty much it. So, if you guys have any questions, we'd love to answer them.
Well, thank you for that. Any questions, gentlemen?
I just would like to say thank you for all that you guys do for the community and the volunteer. You do all the hard work you put in.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Dave.
And sorry, Benny, he had to help a family member this morning. He'd have been here this morning, so he'd have probably had some questions for you guys, so...
Yeah.
On behalf of him, he said, sorry, wasn't able to attend, so... Yeah, Counselor?
Yeah, I don't have a question either, just same thing as Sliv Chuck said, is good work, right? And it's easy to get behind associations that are active and get the volunteer level up there, so good work.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your presentation. Have a great, safe trip home, you guys.
Al, do you want a break for dinner right now or lunch? Yeah? We need a motion to, first to, to accept this as, for consideration? Anyone want to make the motion?
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, I'll make that motion. I have a follow-up question though, too, so...
Okay. Right, thank you, Counselor Swiger. On behalf of counsel, the council accepts the presentation by Cherry Grove Recreation and Agricultural Society's information and furthermore directs administration to bring back additional information regarding their request to increase the society's approval annual operating grant maximum allocated through the MD policy number three C point zero one one, Community Association Operation Grant Policy to a future meeting of council for consideration. Any discussion on this? Motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Okay, Carrie? Yes, Counselor Swiger, you had something to add?
The question, I just wondered, Mr. Reeve, if that group has actually talked to maybe Ms. Kewen Bow about the grants that we actually have available to, because other community halls kind of have the same issues and they do, they have applied for kind of large grants to fix roofs, put in new kitchens, that sort of thing? So, I just wondered if that group has actually approached the MD?
Through the Reeve to Counselor Swiger, we have been approached through written requests for additional sponsorship. For example, we just received a request for their upcoming Jim Kanna event through the donation and sponsorship policy. They were, we responded to them to, to choose, to let us know which, how much they were requesting, because it was a very general request. And so we did provide them with a copy of the donation and sponsorship policy and the community action grant policy at that time, but it was just for that specific event sponsorship as far as sitting down and having a specific conversation where we could go over it and kind of go for a feel of all the different events and whatnot that they have going on and their needs, except for this delegation request and informal discussions between one of our staff members who's also on the act society and ourselves. There has been no formal conversations.
So, just to clarify for me though, and maybe the rest of council, I think we do have a pot of money set aside that community groups can apply for, for, you know, repairs of buildings and that sort of thing?
Through the Reeve to Counselor Swiger, there in the community action grant policy, there are two, there's four streams and the last two streams are specific to capital projects or capital improvements. And both of those streams, there's a small, a medium, and then a large, so they can request up to a hundred and fifty thousand matching dollars for capital projects, correct?
Okay, so they haven't done that yet, though?
There has not. No applications have been received at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. I think we're gonna adjourn for dinner now or lunch, recess? Thank you. Just looking for a motion to...
I'm making a motion, Mr. Reeve.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Kravjat.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Kravjat, for making a motion that council postpones item five-two delegation Toma Consulting Court to a future meeting of council. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, call for the vote.
That's Carrie. So, we're probably going to nine point two, Planning and Community Services, correct? Nine point two-one, Bylaw Number eighteen oh two. Correct.
Nine point two point three.
Yep, sorry. Thank you, Counselor Kravjat. Forgot to check them off.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. So, my next report is actually, the Alberta Development Officers Association, ADOA, has submitted a request to the MD of Bonneville requesting us to acknowledge September eighteenth to twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, as Alberta Development Officers Week within our municipality. The ADOA represents professional development officers in Alberta and is requesting the MD to endorse Alberta Development Officers Week to recognize the sound development and planning practices and the contributions made by development officers to the quality of development within our communities and the environment. Attached for council's information is a draft proclamation. Should council choose to make it and approve this, administration's recommended action is that council approves the proclamation of September eighteenth to twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, as Alberta Development Officers Week within the MD of Bonneville.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Looking for a motion?
I'll make that motion. Option one, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sliv Chuck, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council approves a proclamation of September, proclamation of September eighteenth to twenty two thousand twenty-two, as Alberta Development Officer Week within the Municipal District of Bonneville, proclamation. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, calling for the vote.
Okay, Carrie, thank you. On to nine point two point four.
Mr. Reeve, if I may interrupt, would you like the proclamation read out?
Yes, would you do that for me?
Sure.
Thank you. You have such a nice voice.
Whereas a development officer is a current planning and development specialist with knowledge and current legislation, policies and bylaws, systems, and technical requirements for physical development within communities in the province of Alberta. A development officer enforces and administers land use regulations and policies on behalf of a municipality and is designated to the position of development authority by the municipality as defined by the Municipal Government Act. And whereas the Alberta Development Officers Association, representing professional development officers in Alberta, endorses Alberta Development Officers Week to recognize sound development and planning practices and the contribution made by development officers to the quality of development within our communities and environment. And whereas Alberta Development Officers Week helps us to publicly recognize the work of our municipal colleagues in planning and development for the improvement of the Municipal District of Bonneville. And whereas we recognize development officers and their commitment to public service, now therefore, the Reeve of the Municipal District of Bonneville hereby proclaims the week of September eighteenth to twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, to be Alberta Development Officers Week in the Municipal District of Bonneville.
Very well done. Thank you, Steph. Now, on to nine point two four with the Pontiacs.
Thank you. Administration has received a letter of request from the Bonneville Junior A Pontiacs to continue a partnership with the MD of Bonneville through a committed sponsorship of their twenty twenty-two, twenty-three season. The Pontiacs are a member of the Alberta Junior Hockey League. Their organization helps drive patrons to attend games held at the Bonneville Centennial Center, thereby acting as a hub for community gatherings, which also encourages economic development in the community. Partnership between, our partnership benefits with the Pontiacs are summarized in the request letter attached as Appendix A. The sponsorship request is for forty-five hundred dollars for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three season, which includes one rink board advertising and two pairs, I'm assuming it's two pairs, not two pair of season tickets. Previous hockey funding or sponsorship requests brought to council between twenty twelve and twenty twenty-one are attached in Appendix A for council's information. And just referring to that, you will see that... Just in the recent, in recent history, in August of twenty twenty-one, we did have two, we had two attendees of the recent, of, sorry, the two-person Cash Scramble Golf Tournament back in August of twenty twenty-one, as well in October twenty twenty-one, the similar request for sponsorship was brought forward to council prior to the community action grant program being in place, where council did approve the forty-five hundred dollar sponsorship. Reference to our strategic plan, support of this request is in line with Goal Three of Promoting Community Development. The costs and sources of funding, the cost is forty-five hundred dollars. Potential sources for this, if approved for this funding, if it's approved today through council, this would come from the council contributions to individuals and non-government organizations' budget. If, you'll see in our recommended action, we refer to the community action grant program now in place. If council feels that that would be a better source of funding, the organization would apply through the community action grant policy, submit an application, and they would be submitted to the requirements of that grant policy. However, there is a budget available in that program. However, there is a budget available in that program budget for twenty twenty-two as well. Administration's recommended action is that council directs administration to advise the Bonneville Junior A Pontiacs to apply for the forty-five hundred dollar sponsorship funding support of their twenty twenty-two, twenty-three season through the Municipal Community Action Grant Program.
Thank you. Councilor Swiger?
Is there any, any drawbacks or anything to them applying for that grant application? No reason why they wouldn't get it, is there?
Through the Reeve, that would be dependent on the application that they submit. There is requirements within the policy. However, as long as they are, some of the requirements would be that they are a registered nonprofit group or society, that they provide a certain level of contribution to the community, which I don't think any of us would disagree that they do that. So I, I can't say whether or not they would be approved until I see their application.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Reeve, to go with, with option one.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Swiger, on behalf of council. Make a motion that council directs administration to advise the Bonneville Junior A Pontiacs to apply for the forty-five hundred sponsorship funding support of their two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three season through the Municipal Community Action Grant Program. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Carried, thank you. Nine two five. Oh, yeah, sorry.
Well, that was a question, I just, it was a small point, though, the seasons passes, that, do we, what do you do with those?
That's a good question. What did we do in, did we sponsor this before last season? What did we do with the tickets for every game?
Through the Reeve, I under, I don't believe that, I'm not sure, was there any games in twenty twenty-one?
No.
I think it was just, it ended up being a contribution, just given the COVID scenario. I don't, I don't think any games actually occurred.
There were lots of games last year.
Yeah, there was games last year.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure what was done with the tickets.
But did we have tickets last year? That's what might-
Maybe not.
Mr. Reeve, Members of council, I'm not aware of any tickets last year.
We have a rank, the rank board's still up on the RJ, and we would add tickets, I'm sure, as part of this sponsorship package.
Okay, thank you, Councilor-
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. It says in, in appendix B that it was only for the ring board sponsorship, there was no tickets involved. That's what it says in your appendix B.
Yeah, typically the sponsorship packages include tickets. I don't know if I've been, I've always gotten tickets for sponsorships of other, other businesses, so I think I just go ahead and, whatever.
We'll have to find out, and then we can direct, and then what to do. All right? Thank you. Anything else?
Through the Reeve, I'm just going to, I actually have a copy of the RFD that was submitted back in twenty twenty-one, just to confirm. The sponsorship request at that time, as per the report to council, was for one rank board advertising, one thirtieth anniversary frame limited edition jersey, and one pair of season tickets.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on to nine point three point one.
Okay.
Or did I miss something?
Nine point two point five.
Oh, yes, sorry. Vezo Beach Boat Launch Mooring System Tender Update.
So the Vezo Beach Boat Launch and Mooring System capital projects have been carried over into the twenty twenty-two budget year as part of the overall Vezo Beach Upgrade Phase Two project, which was incorporated into the budget in twenty twenty. After a lengthy provincial and federal regulatory approval process, the Vezo Beach Marina and Boat Launch Tender was able to be issued this year on July twenty-first. It closed on August eighteenth. The tender was organized into two items as follows. Schedule A for the boat launch component and Schedule B for the provision of a mooring system. There was one successful bid received, however, the cumulative bid amount has significantly exceeded the current twenty twenty-two budget allocation. Of note, note one, council had preliminary discussions to move the current Vezo Beach Dock System to Crane Lake if this project proceeded. However, council removed this item from the tentative twenty twenty-three capital budget during the twenty twenty-two budget deliberations last fall. Note two, if reconsidered, this dock system relocation to Crane Lake concept would take approximately two years to complete due to the required engineering, provincial and federal regulatory approval timelines, First Nations consultation as well. Further, the current system at Vezo Beach is at seventeen year, seventeen years old. It's approximately just over halfway through its lifespan of twenty-five to thirty years. While currently in good condition, it is administration's belief that with regular maintenance and repairs, there may be up to a ten-plus years left of life remaining in this asset. I'll switch gears to the boat launch. The current Vezo Beach Boat Launch is extremely busy and is the prime launch location for Moose Lake. However, due to its age and deterioration, it poses potential hazard to the launch users and their equipment. Therefore, administration highly recommends moving forward with its replacement at the tender price of six hundred and twenty-six thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars plus GST. As mentioned above, the current Vezo Beach Mooring System is seventeen years old and is in good condition. At this time, administration recommends canceling this portion of the tender, citing insufficient budget, the ten-plus years of remaining useful life of the current system, and its ability to meet the current location needs. Following council's decision, work on the boat launch portion of this project would be to mobilize immediately and place the necessary order for concrete, currently requiring six to eight weeks order lead time. And this is specific to the boat launch. If council also decides to proceed with the new mooring system portion, this would be completed over the winter and into early spring twenty twenty-three. This project overall is in line with our strategic plan, goal number three, promote community development. Costs and sources of funding. So the total cumulative remaining budget for this project is just over one million dollars as of August twenty-ninth of this year. We still have a remaining engineering cost of forty-two thousand eight hundred and one dollars and nineteen cents. The tender costs are provided as well. The boat launch would be six hundred and twenty-six thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. The new mooring system came in at one point six, one million six hundred and fifteen thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars, which came to a total tender bid of just over two point two million. Our current shortfall for our twenty twenty-two budget, should the full project tender be awarded, is one million two hundred and forty thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents. Administration's recommended action is that council directs us to proceed with the replacement of the Vezo Beach Boat Launch portion of the Vezo Beach Boat Launch and Mooring System project as outlined in Schedule A of the July twenty-first, twenty twenty-two tender, to be funded from the twenty twenty-two capital budget. And furthermore, that council cancels the provisional mooring system portion of the project as outlined in Schedule B of the tender due to budget limitations.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Swiger?
Couple of questions, Esther, the, there was only, well, I guess the comment, there was only one bid, apparently, or one company bid. Is that, did we estimate what it should have cost us to build a boat launch? I just wonder what, what it should have, what we estimated the cost to be, because that seems high.
Through the Reeve, so the original amount that was included in the twenty twenty-two budget for Phase Two Vezo Beach was one point five million. That, I, I did some research into those budget deliberations, and at that time, that included, that one point five million included upgrades of the, upgrades to the overall location, including the installation of a full mooring system, boat launch pad replacement, reconfiguration of boat launch circle and parking, installation of a new playground, continued improvements to day use areas along the water, paved road and parking lot, new signage, and adding gravel to required campsites. It also continued with the vision to return Vezo Beach into a premier campground with full amenities, trail access, and boat launch. So that was from the new initiative form that was submitted and discussed during the twenty twenty-two budget deliberations, which was approved. However, in twenty twenty-one, there was additional budget incorporated into the budget and approved by council of Phase Two Vezo Beach Boat Launch, of an additional three hundred and fifty thousand on top of the one point five million. So in total, for the, for that entire scope, it came in at just over one point eight five million. However, my guess is, over the course of the project, the cost of the paving, the cost of the playground, the cost of all of the things that were actually done, there was some rentals done to the Vezo Beach campsite, the campground caretaker's office, there was the air pillow, new outhouses were done, a new sand dump, tie-in to the showhouse was completed, this new signage went in, the lights, the road paving, and the paint, and the parking lot. So that's why, right now, we're sitting at a total remaining budget of just over a million dollars of that one point eight.
Okay, you said, you said a lot there, but it's just kind of, I guess I'll just ask, do we know what the boat, boat launch should have cost us to put in? To me, it doesn't seem like it should have been over half a million dollars just for a boat launch, but, I don't know, I didn't-
I, I'm sure that, through the Reeve, through, over the last two years of when this plan was originally quoted and, and the budget items were, were proposed to council, I'm sure the costs were less than they are now. As far as whether or not six hundred and twenty-six thousand is, is a good bid for a boat launch, unfortunately, that is the only bid we received.
Councilor Skarsen?
Yeah, so, okay, so, you know, I guess I've got a few questions about some of the existing boat launches we've done, because we've done North Shore Heights, and we just did Burge Grove for a fraction of this cost. So I, I guess I'm curious, what's the difference? Secondly, why did it take two years for this spot, but we were able to do those other spots basically with no time at all? Like, what was, what was the difference between those three areas? I mean, I know the North Shore Heights and Burge Grove were like around that thirty-five thousand dollar mark, and this one's six hundred thousand. So I guess I'm just wondering why, like, what's got to be different about this one that we can't do the same thing as those other two?
Through the Reeve, I can definitely look into that for you, Councilor Skarsen, and find out what, what was the difference in scope to, to clarify why it went, if those two boat dock, or boat launches came in at under a hundred thousand, why is this one six hundred? I think that's a relevant question.
So what is the, so what does this six hundred thousand getting you, then? Like cement pads?
Cement pads is just the beginning of it. The, I understand that the tender that was put out was, and the entire project, even the scope of the project of, of the mooring system is, is extremely, I'll say elaborate. It's very, it's very much a high-class system, which is going to bring the level of service out at Vezo Beach probably from a five to a twenty. It's, it's, it was quite, quite the large scope that was provided in that tender.
I think that, at the end of the day, and all everyone even wanted, including us, was a wider boat launch, right? And, you know, we were able to hammer off several boat launches in the time that this one was in, out for tender or, or approvals and all that. You know, and now we're sitting here, and it'd be another year that we haven't got it done, and we don't even know what we're getting. So I did, you know, our guys did a great job of those other ones doing it themselves, and I just don't understand why we wouldn't be able to do that on this one.
I can, I can definitely speak to that through the Reeve. The other boat launches that we have, when we're just fixing existing ones, there isn't as much regulatory delay as there was for this one. And the only reason why this one, even though it's already a boat launch, because we're waiting on the mooring system approvals through the province and the federal government, the mooring system pretty much takes our existing docks, and, like I said, it, it, it's a massive expansion. So the province required us to go through all these hoops again. If we would have proceeded, I'd have to go in and double-check, but if we just went in and said, we just want to upgrade our boat launch, I'm sure that the timeline wouldn't have taken such a long period, because it's an existing boat launch. And if we were just rehabbing it, then it, you, you would have seen that same quick response time that we were able to do with the other boat launches.
Yes. You guys with that?
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah, Councilor-
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, I would, you know, I'd rather suggest that we have our staff look at the boat launch, what, I mean, they've got to estimate, you've got to estimate how much you think it's going to cost before you tender something, because Councilor Skarsen may be right that it, it should have been sixty thousand, not six hundred thousand. So you only had one, I'm concerned you only had one person bid on it. Well, they could say whatever they want. I, I would just suggest we should kind of know how much it, it will cost us and what, what we're getting for that. So I think we have smart folks here that can kind of do that estimate. Because I'd rather not tender this at, at that rate, because I don't even know what we're getting.
Through the Reeve, our original estimate for the tender cost was going to be around a million dollars. So administration-
We're just talking the boat launch, though. We're just talking the boat launch.
No, I, I was talking for the, our, our, two years ago, the estimated cost was going to be for the two pieces, for the two projects was going to be around a million dollars. That was what we were expecting.
But we still don't know what the breakdown, or maybe you do, maybe what was the breakdown for the boat launch? Or do you know?
Through the Reeve, yes, we do have all that information. I just need to get a copy of that information and be able to provide that to council.
I think before we make a motion, I'd like to see that.
Yeah.
Councilor Skarsen?
To go even further, I mean, I, to come here and ask us to even to consider approving two and a half million, like, we don't even know what this mooring system looks like or what we're approving, right? I mean, if you come at us and say, listen, we've got a road to do, this is, we know what a road looks like, but, you know, at least something to say, this is what this mooring system is going to look like that you're paying two and a half million bucks for. You know, I can't make a decision based off anything here today.
Sure, through, through the Reeve, we, the tender document was posted out on, on our website, but we can definitely circulate it to council, which defines the scope of the project.
Yeah.
So we can do that, and if, if council would like, we could bring it back again to the next meeting of council and then-
Well, I would like to know, I would just like to you to bring back, you know, why can't we, for the boat launch at least, the mooring system, I'm, I'm fine with, I always was fine with the docks that's in there. I mean, it's a nice big dock, I guess, but the, the issue was always the boat launch, right? It was too narrow, you know, so we all, all anyone wanted to do was just widen that boat launch to ten or twelve feet, right, instead of eight feet. So, you know, we've done so many boat launches since, I think would have been just easy to, to do that. And yeah, so if the guys come back and say, listen, we can do that next July or whatever, like we did the other ones, I think that would be the best option, six hundred grand for that is-
We could just table this then, if you guys want.
Well, I just think you just need to come back with that other stuff, right? And or table it or do whatever, I guess, you want with it, but-
Through the Reeve, actually, being that most of this discussion on the scope of the project happened back in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, I, I, both Bowen and I were going through as much as we could the records to find out, where did the definition of the scope come from? And unfortunately, all we could find was this new initiative sheet as part of the twenty twenty-two budget deliberations. There was no other documentation specific to why, why was this, this project's scope so huge?
Yeah, for example, like, whenever we did the venture park, I mean, there was, we, we had all kinds of pictures and, and drawings and this and that. And I, maybe I, I can't remember, but I don't remember seeing anything about the, the mooring system and what that looks like. And I'm not on the, I don't go to the MD website to look at these documents, to be honest. I, I look at what's sent to me, so I, you know, I can't, I can't vote on that today. But I just think bringing back something-
Well, they have a number two here moved, we can go with that. We can go with that.
Well, it's not even a budget thing, I don't think, right? It's.
You could bring it back to the next meeting of council, for sure.
The budget's there, right? We've got money to do it, it's just, what are we doing, right?
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead, Al.
Mr. Reeve, members of council, if council would like, then I would suggest to table the item until the council meeting on the 28th and we'll bring back further information on the 28th.
I think that's the best.
Yeah.
Who would like to do that?
Well, my mic's on, so I'll do it.
Okay, we tabled that? You have to vote on that, correct? No discussion? I call for the vote?
Just to confirm, Scarsen, Counselor Scarsen's comment, there was no council, in a regular meeting of council or a council committee,
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Scarsen. On behalf of council, I counsel tables items 925 Vezo Beach Boat Launch and Mooring System Tender Update to next meeting of council for additional information. Y'all call for the vote? Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
May I just ask one quick question? So is that regulatory approval? Is there a timeline? Like, is there an expiry date, let's say, on that at all? Or is that, you're good now to?
We're good.
You're good?
We're good. We could do this project next year. We, I'd have to double check if it's open-ended, but I know it's good for at least three to five return.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bespoke.
Through the reef, good afternoon, council.
Good afternoon.
I will make this brief.
Thank you. Okay, that's enough.
Today, I bring to you Corporate Services Quarterly Department and Financial Reports up to June 30th, 2022. Please find, attach the quarterly summary report for the months of April, May and June from the Corporate Services Department and financial reporting for the quarter ending June 30th, 2022. For the purposes of maintaining transparency, the Corporate Services Department has prepared a quarterly report for council for the activities accomplished up to June 30th, 2022. Included in Appendix A are the highlights from the departments within Corporate Services. And Appendix B provides a summary financial update for the second quarter of the year ending June 30th, 2022. So if we go to Appendix A, I won't read through all of that. There's just a couple of highlights that I wanted to bring forward to council for Q2. In the Assessment Department, for the designated industrial properties, there's, there was a focus on doing the reinspection cycle for Ward 6 North within the, the Cold Lake Air Weapons Range. So preparation work to inspect that for the first time with our assessment team. The Assessment Services Department also sent out letters notifying property owners within range four that we were going to be doing an annual reinspection of, of those properties. We also assisted the Provincial Assessment Auditor as they gathered information to perform their assessment audit for the, the M D. Within the Property Tax Department, we have sent out just over 20,000 tax notices for the 2022 year. Within Finance, and there's a correction here we need to make, within the first two bullets of the Finance section, it should reflect 2021, not 2020. So those two lines would read like this. Preparation and completion of the 2021 financial statements. Submission of the 2021 statistical information return to Municipal Affairs. The other big project that was kicked off within Finance was the initiation of, or implementation of a new budgeting software called Questica, focusing specifically on the operating budget portion of the overall 2023 budget. So the Finance team rolled that out to all of the departments. Within Human Resources, the quarter facilitated hiring 85 employees and processing 20 employees who were no longer working here anymore. Within the IT function, the campground season started up, so any IT support that was required, they also facilitated in the Questica budgeting software to get everything up and, up and running. They also worked on the, a migration to a, the payroll system, moving from one version of it to the, to the other, and also putting the RFP out for photocopier replacements. So those were kind of the high-level items in Appendix A for what's happened within Corporate Services Department. In regards to the financial report, the statement of operating surplus or deficit compares the operating revenue, operating revenue and expenditures to the budget. As of June 30th, 2022, the total revenues were 106 million dollars and the total expenditures were 32 million dollars. These expenditures represent 28% of the total budgeted operating expenditures. The statement of capital expenditures, funding and reserves compare the capital expenditures to date with the capital budget. The capital expenditures at the end of the quarter was 3.4 million with projects in progress. The quarterly report also includes the 2022 budget summary that has been updated for the unbudgeted expenditures approved by council up to May 25th, 2022. The total operating and capital budget has increased by 4.4 million, 946,309 dollars and the revised total operating and capital budget is now 167 million, 800, 830,289 dollars for 2022. The cash position as, as of June 30th, 22 shows a cash balance of 31.5 million and investments totaling 50.8 million. Administration recommended action is that council accepts the Corporate Services Quarterly Department and Financial Reports, June 30th, 2022, as information. And furthermore, the council approves the June 30th, 2022 quarterly financial report as presented. Council's options are, one, the council accepts the Corporate Services Quarterly Department and Financial Reports, June 30th, 2022, as information. And furthermore, the council approves the June 30th, 2022 quarterly financial report as presented. Option two, the council directs administration to bring back additional information regarding the Corporate Services Quarterly Department and Financial Reports for the quarter ending June 30th, 2022 to a future meeting of council as instructed.
Thank you. Looking for a motion, please? Thank you, Counselor Scarsen.
So just, no, I got a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So this being to the end of June 30th, like, is there a quarter that you get, you have more expenses come in as far as operating is concerned?
Yes, everything still is going to be coming in throughout, throughout to the end of the year. So right now, some of the projects were just getting kicked off. Some of them are kind of in the works. So we're going to be getting more throughout the Q3 and Q4.
Yeah, I guess I'm just curious on the 28%, like halfway through the year, is that kind of where you expect it to be, or?
For that, I can ask Leonid, Leonid, do we have any additional information right now? We can, we can, we can bring that back to another council meeting as to what this year's quarter two looks like versus last year, if, if that's the direction of council.
Yeah, just like I said, because when I look at total expenses on your last sheet there, and, well, you mentioned it about it's 28% of the total budgeted halfway through the year, right? So I don't know if you just hit it, get an onslaught of payments due at the end of the year, or how does that all usually play out, right? So.
Go ahead, Al.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Members of council. It's, it's a great question. Unfortunately, in, in municipal budgets, it's not a linear, you're quarter way through the year, so everything will be 25%, halfway, 50%. For example, we don't collect any revenue until the third quarter. So revenues don't show as being 80 or 90 or 100% because our taxes are just, are just starting to come in now. It's pretty typical for the third and fourth quarter of a year and the municipal government is when we get the invoices, construction projects. Even if they're not capital projects, but they're, they're projects that are done through operating budgets, typically that work will be done through May, June, July, August, and those bills will start coming in, into August, September, October. And then you'll see that the third quarter operating expenses percentages, you'll probably see that jump from 30% to probably 70, 75%. It, it kind of, it kind of works this way because our construction season is, this would have been ending on June, in June 30th. Our construction season would have only been underway for maybe 30 days. And it's the big bills that'll come in for construction season. The 28, 30% is, from my experience, is pretty normal for the first half of the year. And then we get, trust me, we get caught up pretty quick on the expense side of it once construction season and the purchasing season kind of wind up. And then we end up with, we end up with the invoices coming in, probably starting now if they haven't started already.
So is all of your capital included in this expense report? Or is this?
Through the reef, all of the capital expenditures? Only the capital expenditures that we've received through our financial system up to the 30th of June? So if we received anything in July or?
Yeah, but I'm saying, so all the, all the capital projects, any expenses would be in here as well?
That we have received, correct. Yeah.
Yes, Counselor Swiger.
On page three of Annex B, there's this line item for general, general municipal expenses under expenditures.
Okay.
And I, I just found it strange that the 20, there's a 2021 budget and a 2022 budget, and the 2021 budget is 21 million and, and for 2022 it's 49.
Okay.
So just like quite a difference, right? And, and we're not done in 2022 yet.
So through the reef, to Counselor Swiger, these are the actual budgeted, the budgets as they were set through the normal budget process. And then any amendments that council has added to the budget since that original. So what administration can do is come back to council and take a look at exactly what that difference was from 2021 to 2022. It could have been a redistribution of, of, recategorization of some of the expenditures from last year. But administration can bring that back to council if that's council's desire.
I'd like to see that, just interesting, because it looks like we're spending more than double what we did in 2021. I'm not sure, I'm not sure what general municipal expenses actually covers, but it'd be nice to maybe see that.
And Mr. Reeve, members of council, I would, although the individual columns may, I, I think the, the important number is at the bottom where you'll see that, that the total budget is, is only 4,000, is only 4 million dollars different than the, so. Mr. Bespoke is absolutely correct, the difference in 21 and 49 million. So for example, in the spring, when there was amendments being made to the budget, that would have been included, some of those would have included in general municipal expenses, depending on what, depending on what those items were. We can certainly, if, if council would like a breakdown on that, we can certainly provide a breakdown on that.
I appreciate it. And just one other question on the long-term investments. And so I don't know if you'll have that at the tip of your tongue here, but ATB GIC, it says ATB GIC 5100 Restricted, and then right below it says CIBC Woodgundy Bonds for a total of 42 million. And those are two separate banks, so I'm not sure why they're all lumped under one. Is there two, is there two funds there? A Woodgundy Fund and an ATB GIC?
Through the reef to council. If that's something that council would like brought back at the next council meeting, we can definitely break that out as well.
Yeah, because you just, you show it as a total, but I'd be kind of interested to find out what's, what's what.
Sure.
Bring it back, thanks.
And I would also suggest to council that you'll see a fairly significant difference probably in our next quarterly financial report. We now have a new general manager. And I'm sure that, I'm sure that Ms. Walker is going to want to have this look completely different. She's nodding her head quite vigorously. So I'm sure our financial reporting is going to look differently at the end of the next quarter than it does at the end of this quarter. I, I've expressed the concern with the, with the department, how we report our reserves. One of the things I will point out to council is you have a reserve sheet, but what it doesn't show is the other reserve to which all of our projects or many of our projects are being paid from. This shows of reserves that you could dip in today, but we've got approximately 30 million dollars worth of projects taking place right now that have been funded over the last couple of years through reserves. That's not shown in any of these reports. And it's, it's been my position that we should be showing on these quarterly financial statements all of those things and even the progress of each of those capital projects individually. And we don't, we just show it as a big general number. But I think we should be talking about where we're, where we're at with each of those projects. For example, it wouldn't have been June 30th, but Sunset Beach Road was finished here just recently. We should have on the next, on the next quarterly financial report, the actual, what did it cost us? How did that project finish out? If it was still going on, we should be showing we're 50% completed, going to be coming in at a budget. That way it would give council some confidence that these projects are not going to be, we're not going to come into a council meeting one day asking for more money. Or we'll also see the successes we have, where we had several million dollars in the budget for Sunset Beach Road and came in at less than half of it. So I, I, there is going to be some very significant changes in how these are reported at the next quarterly statement.
Okay, thank you.
Through the reef to council. So right now I have two items to bring back. One is a breakdown of the general municipal segment of the 2022 budget compared to the 2021 budget, as to the detail as to why. And the second item is the long-term investment breakdown that's currently reported, the details of what makes up that 42 million. Are those the only two items that council is asking administration to bring back?
I think so. That'll be fine, thank you. All right, looking for a motion, gentlemen? Yes?
Mr. Reeve, I'll make the motion to approve number one.
All right, thank you, Counselor Kravieak, for making a motion on behalf of council that council accepts the Corporate Services Quarterly Department and Financial Reports, June 30th, 2022, as information. And furthermore, the council approves the June 30th, 2022 quarterly financial report as presented. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie.
Thank you, council.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Bespoke. Point one.
Good afternoon, council. I have a couple of hopefully quick items here. RFD number one, dust control, 34th Street, Town of Bonneville. At the August 24th, 2022, regular meeting of council, discussion was had on the maintenance of a Town of Bonneville road bordering the M D. Traffic on 34th Street, commonly known as Lover's Lane, is creating dust issues for the M D residents that live on the east side of that road. As many M D resident concerns have come in asking for dust control on this road, council made a motion tabling discussion on dust control for 34th Street north of Secondary Highway 659 within the Town of Bonneville to the next regular meeting of council for further information. After discussions with the Town of Bonneville, the Town of Bonneville started maintenance on this road on August 26th, 2022. This included a shoulder pull to establish ditches, resurf, or, sorry, surface recontouring and graveling. Some additional cold mix will be added to the north of the existing cold mix and liquid dust suppressant will be applied after that passed the residence. The M D will not. The M.D. will not need to take any action on this road. As such, the recommended action is that council accepts the update on dust control for thirty-fourth Street north of Secondary Highway six-fifty-nine within the Town of Bonneville as information.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Criviac?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the Town of Bonneville for the work they did on the road, and I guess it's, there will needs to be some more liquid dust control going further north with the cold mix portion yet, as the dust still is right beside the houses that are there. But I'll also make motion one that we accept this report as information.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council that council accepts the update on dust control for thirty-fourth Street north of Secondary Highway six-five-nine within the Town of Bonneville as information. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you. Onto nine four-two.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. My next RFD is for the vehicle purchase for Corporate Services. Through the twenty-twenty-two capital budget, council approved the purchase of a new vehicle for Corporate Services. Requests for pricing and availability were sent to three local auto dealers, and the M.D. received five quotes from this request in Appendix A. Due to supply issues for new vehicles, this request was for a vehicle meeting our minimum specifications with a one-week delivery date. A publicly posted tender was not required as per the M.D. procurement policy two B point zero one-two. After review of the vehicles offered, Corporate Services determined that the vehicle identified as quote number, quote one of Appendix A will be the best option for the department. This vehicle is within the approved budget. Sources of funding are the, is the twenty-twenty-two capital budget and its administration's recommendation that council approves the purchase of a twenty-twenty-two Ford Escape from Ducharme Motors Limited in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, three hundred, thirty-nine dollars, twenty-five cents, plus GST to... Okay. Sorry. To be funded from the twenty-twenty-two capital budget. I was corrected that it was Planning and Community Services, not Corporate Services, so my apologies for that. But the recommendation is still, is still that.
Thank you. Looking for a motion?
Mr. Reeve, just a question. Is that, we picked that, that wasn't the cheapest one, I'm just looking through here, but is that, we picked that one because, why?
Through the re to Counselor Swiger. The recommendation from, from the department was for this unit. I'm not quite sure what the rationale was, but I would suggest that auction and, and comfort are probably the, the main reasons.
Yeah, just a second for a motion. I'll make the motion for option one, please.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Sipchak, on making a motion on behalf of council that council approves the purchase of a two thousand twenty-two Ford Escape from Ducharme Motors Limited in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine twenty-five, plus GST to be funded from the two thousand twenty-two capital budget. Any discussion, other discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Carrie, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bespalk.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Members of council.
Just a question, or I guess a comment. If you said it met all their, like, all of these quotes would have met their, what they asked for, I would have assumed, otherwise you wouldn't have shown them. So I, I would have just thought you would have, if they all met, why wouldn't you just take the cheaper one? Because like, there's ones that are five thousand dollars less than that.
Yes. Through the re, we actually had chosen the cheaper one, however, by the time our staff went out to go take a look at it, it was already off the lot. So Cal, Infrastructure was able to reach out to them, and once we realized we were going to bring it back to council, to see if they could put it on hold, the next one that was available, and that wasn't sold, and they agreed to do that for a two-week period until we could have the council meeting approval.
Yeah, vehicles are hard to find right now, so.
Thank you.
No, at least that's, makes sense, yeah.
Good job. Thank you, guys. Nine point five-one, chief.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, and members of council. The Lakeland Lodge and Housing Foundation is seeking support for their decision to demolish the Cold Lake Senior Citizen Lodge located at three oh three twelfth Street in Cold Lake. They have requested the M.D. send a letter in support of their decision to the Minister of Seniors and Housing. The property is currently owned by Alberta Social Housing Corporation, and the foundation manages three buildings on that parcel of land. The foundation's long-term vision for this property site is to develop a campus of care. Further details can be found in the foundation's request letter that's attached to this request. So the administrative recommended action is that council approves sending a letter from the re to the Minister of Seniors and Housing in support of the Lakeland Lodge and Housing Foundation's decision to demolish the Cold Lake Senior Citizen Lodge located at three oh three twelfth Street in the city of Cold Lake, and you can see the, the potential council options.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. I'll make the motion to approve number one.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Criviac, for making a motion on behalf of council that council approves sending a letter from the re to the Minister of Seniors and Housing to support of the Lakeland Lodge and Housing Foundation's decision to demolish the Cold Lake Senior Citizens Lodge located at three oh three twelfth Street in Cold, in the city of Cold Lake.
Any discussion on this motion? Yes, Counselor Sipchak?
I'd just like to say, I know by being on the board of Lakeland Lodge and Housing Association, they've been pushing the government for years on this, so I'd like to, I'm glad that we're going to back it and help them, and let's get something done there when they could have had it done a few years ago, and the cost was cheaper if the provincial government would have listened, so I'm glad we're going forward.
Okay, thank you, council. Any other discussion on this? All right, call for the vote. Carrie. Thank you. Nine five-two.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of the council. Nine five-two is the Dove Center Employment Agency Job Placement Program Update and Proclamation Request. On June the eighth of twenty-twenty-two, the Dove Center Employment Agency presented to council as a delegation to provide information regarding their program to find job placements for persons with disabilities in the community. They also requested to have October twenty-twenty-two claimed as Disability Employment Awareness Month in the M.D. of Bonneville. Following their presentation, council directed administration to bring the proclamation request as well as additional information regarding the M.D. becoming a supporting partner with the Job Placement Program back to a future meeting. The Job Placement Program, since the Dove Center's presentation in June, administration has been actively looking at each department for positions that could serve as potential options for participation in the Dove Center Employment Agency's Job Placement Program. To date, some opportunities have been identified, primarily in Planning and Community Services. Administration has remained in contact with the Dove Center Employment Agency since their presentation, will be working with them over the coming months on options for proceeding as a participant in their Job Placement Program. Disability Employment Awareness Month recognizes the contributions of workers with disabilities, raises awareness about an underrepresented talent pool in the province, and the available supports that help persons with disabilities succeed in the workforce. It has been recognized provincially since twenty-seventeen, and Canada formally declared October as National Disability Employment Awareness Month in twenty-ten, and there is a draft proclamation attached as Appendix A. There are really very little costs associated, they'd be used for existing positions in the M.D. rather than creating new positions, and administration is recommending that council accepts the update on the Municipal District of Bonneville's participation in the Dove Center Employment Agency's Job Placement Program as information, and that council approves the proclamation of October twenty-second as Disability Employment Awareness Month within the Municipal District of Bonneville. There, you can see your options, and we would require two motions.
Thank you.
And as well as the pro, the proclamation for the re, or somebody else to read.
Yeah, I'll get it.
I'll just make motion one that we accept the update. All right. Thank you, Counselor Swiger, for making the motion on behalf of council. That council accepts the update of Municipal District of Bonneville's participation in the Dove Center Employment Agency Job Placement Program as information. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll just call for the vote.
I was Carrie. Looking for another motion, please?
Yeah, Counselor Swiger? I'll make the other motion that council approves the proclamation of October twenty-second as Disability Employment Awareness Month within the M.D. of Bonneville. Okay, thank you, Counselor Swiger, for making the motion on behalf of council that council approves the proclamation of October twenty-twenty-two as Disability Employment Awareness Month within the Municipal District of Bonneville. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, call for the vote. Okay, Carrie. I'll just read that out. Whereas persons with disabilities are valued members in our community and deserve the opportunity to live and work in a community where there is respect and reward for their efforts, skills, and accomplishments, and whereas persons with disabilities are contributing members of the workforce throughout the region and are a critical part of our effort to build a strong economy, and whereas promoting deserved and inclusive hiring practices and ensuring people with disabilities gain meaningful employment as an important part of building a strong and resilient community, and whereas proclaiming October twenty-twenty-two as Disability Employment Awareness Month in the Municipal, Municipal District of Bonneville will help raise awareness about disabilities, employment issues, and will serve to recognize the contributions of persons with disabilities. Now therefore, I, Barry Klinzke Reeve, the M.D. of Bonneville, do hereby proclaim the month of October twenty-twenty-two to be disability employment awareness month. In the M.D. of District of Bonneville, I urge all citizens to celebrate the contributions of individuals with disabilities to our workplaces and communities, and promote the employment of individuals with disabilities to create a better and more inclusive society. Thank you.
Onto nine five-three, addition for trout.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. So we received recently an invitation to participate in the Lake Trout Working Group for Cold Lake. The M.D. of Bonneville has received an invitation from the Ministry of Environment and Parks for one member of the organization to participate in the Lake Trout Working Group for Cold Lake. The purpose of this working group will be to learn about the current status of lake trout populations in Cold Lake, develop and test proposals for sustainable trout harvest regulations, and suggest proposed sport fishing regulation options. The ministry is inviting representation from various community stakeholders to ensure a diverse perspective is involved in the development of regulation options. Recent lake trout population monitoring has shown that the populations are sufficient to explore increased levels of recreational harvest under the sport fishing regulations. Alberta Environment Parks will be hosting four in-person meetings from September to December. Each working group member will be expected to attend every meeting or send an alternate in their place if unable to attend for any reason. The dates and times of these meetings will be determined by the members and are anticipated the last two to three hours each, and further details are available in the invitation letter in Appendix A. As well attached for council review is also Appendix B, the Lake Trout Working Group for Cold Lake Information Sheet. Very minimal cost, it'd just be cost for travel to the meetings by the appointed member. I will say that I did speak to Counselor Crick, Counselor Crick championed the idea of local fishing at the floor of RMA directly to the minister in November of last year. So I did reach out to Counselor Crick, and it would be our recommendation that counselor, that council appoints Counselor Crick to the Lake Trout Working Group for Cold Lake for the duration of the project.
Thank you. All right, looking for a motion then? Yes?
I'll make a motion that we, that make Counselor Josh Crick to...
All right. Thank you, Counselor Sipchak, on making a motion on behalf of council that council appoints Counselor Crick to the Lake Trout Working Group for Cold Lake for the duration of the project.
Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
That's the last chance to say no, Josh.
I'll tell you what, if you didn't put Crick in there, you'd have been in trouble.
This is a tough decision.
Oh, defeated.
Because Mike wanted it.
Carrie. Onto nine five-four, SPCA.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of the council. This is regarding the Bonneville and District SPCA Raise the Woof event. The Bonneville and District SPCA is hosting a comedy night called Raise the Woof on September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two. This is the SPCA's biggest fundraiser of the year, and the funds raised from this event are vital to keeping the shelter operational. The Bonneville and District SPCA is requesting the M.D. support via ticket purchases for the event and/or donation of promotional items for their silent and live auctions. The donation of promotional items is being processed through Policy Number two A point zero zero three donation, sponsorship, and recognition policy. As such, we're only requesting council direction on the purchase of tickets to the event. The Raise the Woof event is a stand-up comedy show being held at the Seniors Drop-In Center on September twenty-fourth, commencing at five P.M., and tickets are fifty dollars for an individual or four hundred dollars per table of eight. You can see the Appendix A, which is a letter from SPCA. They would be funded from the twenty-twenty-two operating budget, and our recommended action is that council approves the purchase of however many tables of eight to the Bonneville and District SPCA Raise the Woof event being held on September twenty-fourth at the Bonneville Seniors Drop-In Center at a cost of, at that point, I guess it'd be four hundred dollars per table, or that council approves the purchase of X number of individual tickets to the Bonneville and District SPCA Raising the Woof event at a cost of X number of dollars, depending on how many tickets council would like to purchase.
Thank you. Discussion?
Is the SPCA something typically is the M.D. support financially, or?
I would have to, staff is nodding their head, I think we did, we did some support for SPCA last year.
Sorry, your question? Sorry, Mr. Reeve, but it is my understanding that we do actually have some budget allocation annually. Mr. Gandolfi could probably speak to it more, it comes out of his budget.
Okay.
Mr. Reeve, members of council, that's correct. We do, we do fund the SPCA fifty thousand dollars per year by way of an annual grant for their operating costs, as well as for their feline spay and neuter program.
Okay. That's your question? Thank you. Thank you. Can anybody attend this? First of all, that's coming up right away here.
I'm not available on the twenty-fourth.
Sorry?
I can't make it on the twenty-fourth.
I cannot make it either.
It all depends what the weather's like.
Yeah. So there was an option to give a lump sum to this event?
There wa, there wasn't actually an option included to give the lump sum. I'm sure if council wanted to purchase a table for four hundred dollars, that if, you know, the odd counselor who could make it with their spouse, and I'm sure, I'm, I'm sure we could find staff to go to an SPCA event as well to fill the table.
Okay, let's, let's do that. Someone make a motion, please. Okay, thank you, Counselor. One table?
One table.
She'll put in the figures here right away. That's Counselor Swiger that made that motion? Okay, thank you, Counselor Swiger, for making a motion on behalf of council that council approves the purchase of one table of eight to the Bonneville and District SPCA Raise the Woof event being held on September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two at the Bonneville Senior Citizens Drop-In Center at the cost of four hundred to be funded from the two thousand twenty-two operating budget. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Yeah, that's quick.
No, it's quick. That was Carrie, thank you. Onto nine-five-five, that's for the, the federal holiday?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. I apologize for no actual request for decision in front of you. This has been something that's in flux that just actually started yesterday afternoon with the announcement by the Prime Minister of Canada suggesting that Monday, September nineteenth, will be a federal statutory holiday. The province announced at approximately twelve-thirty this afternoon that it will not be a statutory holiday in the province of Alberta. They are recommending and encouraging strongly that employers make allowances to allow staff who want to, to mourn the Queen's passing, to make allowances for them at work. They are naming Monday, the nineteenth, in the province, the provincial day of mourning. So there are some municipalities who have declared it for their staffs, though. For example, I'll just, a real quick list that was sent to me here, that's probably an hour and a half old, and I'm sure this is changing rapidly with other municipalities. For example, the town of Edson has said, yes, it will be a stat. Neehill County has said, yes, it'll be a stat. Town of Three Hills will be a stat. City of Locom will be a stat. Lethbridge County will be a stat. Town of Oketoks will be a stat. So right now, the way the numbers are coming in, about thirty-nine percent of municipalities in the province are taking it as a stat day, and about seventeen percent are saying no, and we still have about forty percent pending. We don't know what the answer will be yet. For councils, I guess the question is, is council interested in having it as a day off for staff? I'd remind council that there's already two days off for, in September, Labor Day weekend and September thirtieth, Truth and Reconciliation Day. This would be a third statutory holiday in September. I'm unclear in reading the Prime Minister's statement as to whether or not this will be a permanent statutory holiday federally, or if this is a one-off just for the Queen's funeral. It, it's, we're, it's just going to be a one-off? So in any event, that, that's kind of the question at the moment, is are we providing the day off to staff or not? I'm personally recommending against it. We have two days off already in September, one for Truth and Reconciliation on the thirtieth, and Labor Day that just took place last week.
Yes, Counsel Crick?
Do we need a motion in this regards then?
I, if the decision is to a status quo, I wouldn't need a motion for status quo. If we decide to make it as a, as a day off for staff, I would need a motion for that.
I, I'm in agreements with our C.A.O. that there's already two stat holidays in September, and they'll think we need a third. And I'm not in the habit of doing stuff just because Mr. Trudeau says so.
Oh, is that your attitude?
Yeah, but on the other hand, it is the only queen that any, any one of us has ever had. So I, and she, I know, we all do. But she was one of the, she's a, we might never have another queen like that. I don't think we'll ever have another queen like that. So I'm, I'm good both ways, whatever council decides, but I would definitely, if the staff wanted to take the day off, I would be, I'd have no problem with it. But we'll go under Al's recommendation, either way is fine by me.
You have a question?
Yes?
Is the office, like, completely closed here on the thirtieth?
Council motion prior to the election of last year was that Truth and Reconciliation Day is a, is a day that we close the office. So the thirtieth is a closed day, there will be nobody here. Obviously, any emergency roadwork, the peace officer, the public safety program would still be, but the doors are locked, nobody will be here answering telephones. It would be like a regular statutory holiday on the thirtieth.
So it'd be the same on the nineteenth, if we chose to shut her down, everything would be done?
It would be done, it would be identical to any other statutory holiday.
What does council think?
Mr. Reeve, I wouldn't be against it, it's like you said, it's only once, it's, you know, in recognition of the queen, it's not every year.
Okay. Counsel Criviac?
I guess I could go either way, but I don't know. I'll wait for the vote.
I'm okay with giving staff off in honor of the queen.
Josh?
I guess I'm not, not in favor of making it a stat holiday, but if they want to take a day off, they have personal days, I think they can take to mourn that day, so.
Yeah, I'm a hard no, so it's, I would not vote in favor of that at all. I mean, if you want to mourn, I'm sure you can do it in the evening as well, right?
We're kind of split.
Mr. Reeve, members of council, then somebody make a motion either way, and let, let the votes fall where they may.
Well, do we need a motion if it's just another day, like?
No, you don't.
So I, I make a motion to accept this as information, and there's your motion.
Josh already made the motion, no, did he not? Oh, I thought you did, sorry.
All right. We'll wait for that to get typed up. All right, thank you, Counselor Scarsen, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council accepts the update on the federal holiday announcement for Monday, September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two as a statutory holiday and mourning for the passing of Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth the Second as information. Any discussion on this?
How do you vote against that?
Seeing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. It's defeated. So looking for another motion? It'll be the same thing, though.
I'll make the alternate motion, Mr. Reeve, that we allow staff that Monday off.
All right, we'll wait for that to get typed up. I don't think my mic goes back. All right, thank you. There's a motion on behalf of council that Counselor Swiger made, that council declares Monday, September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two as a statutory holiday and mourning for passing of Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth the Second.
Mr. Eve, if I might offer an amendment to council that that should, that that should say declares Monday, September nineteenth, a one-time statutory holiday. If that motion were to pass?
Not, not a good situation.
Yeah.
Reeve, it does say two thousand twenty-two.
True.
That's fine, yeah, it's easy to add it, one time, yeah.
It was the same on the first motion that we made, though. All right, you guys see that amendment, one time, okay? Any other discussion, any discussion on this? Yes, Counselor Crick?
Yes, so the first one was defeated. So if this one's defeated, then we defeated two different motions that kind of is going to contradict itself, isn't it? Then what do we do? Like, if this one's a tie as well?
If this motion were to fail, then we've, we've defeated a motion to receive it for information, and we've defeated a motion to allow staff to have it. So the motion for, to receive for information is not specifically a, a motion to not give staff the day off, it's a motion to receive it for information. So if this were to fail, then I would suggest that it potentially could be one more motion to not give staff the day off or not have it as, as a municipal day of mourning for the queen. And then if they, if they were to fail, or even at this point, if this one was to fail, knowing that the receipt for information is essentially the opposite motion, then, then we're done, there's really nothing else to do, other, unless somebody wants to table the item until the next council meeting.
If this is defeated, we'll, we'll go back to option number one, and then we'll, it'll, it'll pass.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, if this motion is defeated, there's no need making another motion to make it a holiday, it'll be the same thing.
Yes. All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Okay, defeated. So I don't know if we need, do we need another motion, or we just say it as, it's just as information? Thank you. Council invitations, nine-six-one?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. So council's received several invitations. In particular, to no-charge events, the Minister of Justice, Honorable Tyler Shandor, invites two representatives from the MD of Bonneville to participate in an upcoming, upcoming in-person engagement meeting regarding Alberta's ongoing consideration of a provincial police service. Dates and locations are listed in Appendix A for council consideration, the venue locations and addresses will be provided and updated via the registration process. There are six meeting time slots available per day between nine A.M. and three fifty P.M. Number two, the Bonneville Friendship Center invites council to attend the fifth annual Sisters in Spirit Vigil. The event will take place at the Bonneville Centennial Center in the Fieldhouse on Tuesday, October fourth. There'll be a free buffet for which all attendees will need to pre-register by September twenty-third. Doors will be open at five thirty P.M., and the buffet begins at six P.M. with the main ceremony at seven P.M. There are some invitations to events that do have a fee. The County of St. Paul is hosting the Northeast Regional Ag Service Board Conference at the Ashmont Agriplex in Ashmont on November fourth, twenty-twenty-two. The provincial restriction exemption program will be followed. That's odd. Registration deadline is October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two, and the cost is one hundred dollars per person. Number two, the Lakeland Industry and Community Association, LIKA, invites council to attend the annual general meeting in person or virtually at Meatee Crossing and Smoky Lake on October sixth, twenty-twenty-two. And there's a twenty-dollar person charge for in-person attendance for the dinner. And you can see Appendix A, B, C, and D for, for the details on those and, on those invitations. Our recommendation is that council approves registering whoever for the in-person engagement, and for number two, that approves attendance just across the board of the annual Sisters in Spirit Vigil. Council approves registering certain number of council members to the Northeast Regional Ag Service Conference Board in Ashmont, and that council approves attendance to the Lakeland Industry and Community Association Annual General Meeting being held at Meatee Crossing in Smoky Lake.
So, Mr. Reeve?
Thank you.
For the ag, do you have to be vaccinated or have a test before? It's kind of silly right now.
That's, that's what caught me, I had not read that earlier, that's, that's a, I haven't seen provincial restriction exemption program for many, many months. So I'm assuming that that means that you must have current vaccinations. I would have to check into that to see if that includes either the third, fourth, fifth, or, or more shots, or, or a negative proof of, of a negative test. I'm assuming that that's what that means.
Is it possible that's just a type, a typo, because they just copied a form from a different?
It's possible, and we can certainly, we can certainly reach out and...
I saw that in there too, and there's no way I'm going if they're following that program.
Yeah, we can certainly reach out and ask that question if that's, if that's, if that's really the way it is, so we, we can certainly ask that question. If council wanted to, to put some people or put some, some names to that, we can certainly reach out and find out exactly, exactly what they want.
Just speak freely.
Yeah, could we just say whoever wants to go? Otherwise, I would go to that ag, but if it's, if you have to have a test before, then I would not.
We can cert, if we, if you'd like, we can certainly reach out to them fairly quickly, get an answer to council even the end of the day or tomorrow. I'm looking at the application of the registration page, and they've got it bolded and underlined. I, I would doubt highly that that's a typo, looking at this for the twenty-twenty-two Ag Service Board Conference, but, and unfortunately, Mr. Yon is not, he's on vacation this week. So I, I might, I don't even have Matt that could confirm this for me, but we can certainly reach out and get an answer to the question, and then... So if council just wanted to approve whoever wanted to go, and then once we have some names, we can certainly do that through email, and, and then at a hundred dollars a person, we can certainly get that figured out. And in breaking news, Ashmont has an agriplex.
I'll put my name down for that one, for the board, agriculture board, depending on what we get information back.
Yeah, I'll, I'll put my name down too, if I don't want to follow the restriction exemption program.
So, Mr. Reeve, maybe for that, we should just make a blanket, whoever wants to go from council?
Yep.
Yeah, I'll make that motion for the ag.
Mr. Reeve, if I may interrupt, we just, we, we need to know who will be attending, because we need to put down a cost for council to approve for attendance to that conference.
Okay.
So if you like, you can approve all of council attending and, and what that would cost to register all seven of you. You're welcome to do that if you like, but we do need to know.
But you gotta do them all, all four at once?
No, Mr. Reeve, because some will require two.
The first motion, we definitely need separate, because you're registering two specific people, and picking a specific date and time to register those attendees for. The Sisters in Vigil, that, again, that one, there's no cost associated, but we would need to know who would be attending so that we can RSVP to the Friendship Center as to a number of people that will be attending, so that they can have that for their head count for their meal. And the, the, again, the LIKA AGM, we would need to know a number if anyone plans to attend in person, so that we can RSVP to LIKA to arrange the registration fees, because there's a meal associated with that one, which has a cost attached to it as well.
Okay, the policing, I guess I should attend that one? That's correct.
Absolutely, we can, we can send staff, there's no issue with that at all. It's, it's, it's...
I just, he knows a hundred times more than what I know on there, so to have him there would be beneficial, if he can, if he can come.
Yeah.
If he's free on that date. That's probably his holidays.
It's, I think it goes through to four o'clock in the afternoon, it's during the day.
It says nine A.M. to nine, it says nine A.M. to nine fifty-eight.
On Saturday? No, it can't be on Saturday.
It's got a whole bunch of different time slots throughout the day.
Yes, sorry, Mr. Reeve, there's, there's different dates that you can choose from. The nineteenth is obviously probably the preferred, as it's the closest in the city of Cold Lake. But there are, there are different dates available and, and different times.
Yeah, depends on your date, though, it might make some sense. I didn't read that part.
I will, I will note, sorry, I just noticed that the ones in Edmonton were yesterday and today.
Oh. That's on this Saturday, or?
Nineteen, mon, yeah.
Monday?
Monday.
How's that for you? Not good? I better look at mine, too. I can make that, too. If it's nine to, can we book in nine to nine fifteen, or that might be gone already, too? What's that, Robin?
The, the time options available are nine to nine fifty, ten to ten fifty, eleven, eleven fifty, one to one fifty, two to two fifty, or three to three fifty.
Well, we'll take the nine, is that good for you, early in the morning? Yes, let's take the morning one, if that's okay.
I believe RMA is having a virtual town hall that morning, too, at eight fifteen A.M.
Policing Cold Lake. Your eyes got real big, Louis. You're good? Okay, get ahold of me later, we'll make a plan. All right, we need, we need a motion for each one? Yes, okay?
Okay, Mr. Reeve, I'll make the motion that Reeve Kolinsky and Director Gandolphy attend this policing one.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, Counselor Criviac. On behalf of council, that council approves registering Reeve Kolinsky and Director of Public Safety Louis Gandolphy for the in-person engagement meeting regarding Alberta's ongoing consideration of reestablishing provincial policing services on September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. in Coal Lake at the time of 9:00 to 9:50 AM.
I'm just wondering, Mr. Reeve, what if that time slot is not available? Could we add to that motion or any other time slot available?
You could.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, members of council, I would just suggest that you, that you just appoint Reeve Kolinsky and Director Gandolfi to attend the meeting.
Yeah, with no time slot.
With no time slot.
Sure, that's better, yeah.
We can work out the time slots.
Okay, very good. That's good, okay. Any discussion on this, no? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you. Can we have a five-minute recess? Just for a second here. Okay, welcome back. Onto our next, next one is for the Spirit, Spirit Vigil on October 4th, 2022.
This one is for you to attend, right? You can attend? It's, it's addressed to Reeve Kolinsky.
Yeah, I know. All right, I'll go to that one. October 4th. Oh, I was just looking if I was available.
If you can't, then Director Deputy Reeve, she's got to do something.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, so I make the motion to, for Reeve Kolinsky to attend this?
That's October 4th, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Councilor Cravieak. I'm making a motion on behalf of council that council approves attending. The Fifth Avenue Sisters in Spirit Vigil is being held at Bonneville Centennial Center on Tuesday, October 4th, 2022. Any discussion on this? I'll call for the vote. Okay, the ABS Conference?
I'll make a motion that we approve council to go to the Ag Service Board Conference.
You want to have everybody or maybe someone will go right from here?
Well, we don't know, depending on what, we're just going to put everybody down.
Okay, and back on as we go?
They're not gonna, they're not gonna purchase spots for us to go, they're just, we're all approved, approved to go and then we'll, Robin will probably send out an invitation.
Is that okay, Stephanie? All right.
Yeah, but people can't, upon the cost of the overall approval, that's totally fine.
Okay, thank you. Moved by Councilor Crick. On behalf of council, the council approves registering seven council members for the Northeast Regional Agricultural Service Board Conference to be held on November 4th, 2022 in Ashmont, Alberta at a cost of $700 to be funded from the 2022 operating budget. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing that, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you.
And Mr. Reeve and members of council, just for clarification, I would just remind council that we are no longer members of LIKA.
Yeah, no, I was gonna, just coming to my mind as well. So, would you like to attend this?
Well, I would attend if there was someone.
Okay, so there's someone, so we can just, if you're going anyway, we don't need to, anybody else would like to attend? Probably still need a motion, Stephanie? Yeah, for not sending anybody?
If, if you're, if we, if we're not going to be sending anyone, I would either, I would say either no motion is required or a motion could be made just to accept it as an information. Just for clarification, because Counselor Swagart does technically still sit on that board until the AGM, he wouldn't require a council motion to attend.
Okay, so we just take this as, we just need to make a motion to, council takes this as information? Okay, someone like to make that?
Okay, I'll make a motion, we take this as information.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Subchik for making a motion that council accepts this, the council invitations as information for LIKA. That's probably not exactly how it's going to be typed out. Is there going to be any, any discussion on this motion? Okay, thank you. No discussion, so I'll call for the vote. Okay, that's Carrie, thank you.
And Mr. Reeve and members of council, I have one other one that came in to me a couple days ago that didn't make the package and I'm sure, I believe it went out in council correspondence. And that was an invitation to attend the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation in Bonneville. There are several events taking place on September 24 and 25, September 29th, but the full day is September 30th at the Bonneville District Centennial Center Field House. We've been invited and I know Ms. Bartlett is receiving communications from the organizers as to who from the, who from the MD would be attending. I would suggest council, similar motion is just council approves attendance and then we can figure out from there.
Okay.
Apologies, Mr. Reeve, we're just looking for the name of the event.
I should be apologizing, apologizing to you guys, not you guys to me. Again? We just have one. Just talking to L. This is the craziest meeting ever, right? Just, nothing's flowing.
Can I, can I just ask again who made that motion?
I think it was Counselor Swagart.
But L Hogan. Please do. All right. Thank you, Counselor Swagart, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council approves attending the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation event being held at Bonneville District Centennial Center on September 30th, 2022. Any discussion on this motion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Anything else, L?
No, thank you, Mr. Reeve. Members of council, it's just the, the correspondence. The only couple ones that I point, well, one in particular I'd point out would be the, the response from the Ministry of Transportation regarding the joint letter from us, the city Coal Lake, town of Bonneville, Glendon and St. Paul County. You can read it, it's a page and a half. I'm not sure that it, I'm not sure it addressed exactly what the concerns were about Highway 28, but, but other than that, yes. The other thing I will, I would, I will say to council, council action report, the one that you see today, we will be changing the council action report, so it'll be a slightly different style of council action report at the next council meeting and going forward. What we are going to be doing is, is taking council motions that were not received for information, adding them to the council action report and providing a status whether or not there's an action required, whether it's in progress. It's similar to what we do today, but we'll be expanding it to include council motions. What we have done in the past, have just taken direction from council through resolutions, put it on a council action list, but we are going to be taking the council action report, the follow-up action list, and we're going to be taking all of council motions with the exceptions of the ones that were just received for information and we'll be, we'll be adding those to the action list to indicate what action is being taken, if any, on, on
Yeah, I've got nothing to report.
Hey, thank you. Counselor Crick?
Yeah, August 25th, we had a BRFA meeting and we made a change there to the way that single vehicle incidents are billed. So, if it's on a primary or secondary highway, Alberta Transportation Utilities will get the bill for it. And if it's on an MD road, well, not a primary or secondary highway, then the bill will go directly to the registered owner as opposed to it used to go to the insurance company August 26th, we had a Northern Lights Library Service Board meeting and they're proposing a 1.5% levy increase in their draft budget, which I think would cost the MD about $2,000 more approximately per year. August 27th, we had the Ardmore Fire Hall grand opening and a big thanks to all the staff from the MD and the BRFA who worked hard to make it happen and also thank you to all the volunteers from the BRFA that were there and the Ardmore Fire Department. September 6th, we had a Regional Water Service Commission meeting. And on the 7th to the 9th here, this last week, we had the privilege to go to the Alberta Care Conference in MacDuke. Basically, a conference about recycling. There was, is interesting to me because I wasn't familiar with a lot of the way the, the landfill stuff works and, and just kind of where everything goes. And one, a couple interesting points is one, nobody seems to know what to do with electric cars when they, when they're no good anymore. And also the biomedical waste, there's an incinerator in Swan Hills that I think everything in Alberta has trucked there right now to be incinerated. And that site is set to close in 2025. I think there's another site opening up somewhere else, I can't remember the location though. And also with the Alberta Care Conference, there's extended producer liability legislation. So, there was a fellow there with Alberta Environment and Parks doing a presentation on that and basically saying that he'd like everything to be mandatory eventually, that everything you buy be registered with the Extended Producer Responsibility Program. And that essentially means that, that whatever anybody produces, they're responsible to make sure that there's a way to recycle instead of it going to a landfill. So, it sounds good, but it could be, if that actually does happen, it could put costs up for consumers quite a bit, so that's about it for me, L.
Went to the Ardmore Fire Hall opening, it was very nice facility, a lot of people, a lot of local businesses gave door prizes, was really good to see, a good turnout. And on Friday, I went to the Bonneville Chamber, District Chamber Commerce Grand Opening in Bonneville, beautiful facility, beautiful building. And I believe they'll get lots of recognition being on Main Street like they are now and that's all I got to report.
Thank you. Mr. Reeve, I had also the BRFA, business as usual, went to the grand opening of the Ardmore Fire Hall, well-attended. I also went to the Glendon Pirogi Festival. I did not win, did not win the pirogi eating contest this year, so my winning streak ends at four. So, that was all right. Had a police meeting, CPOs, 103 barla complaints in July and August, 18 vehicles pulled off the road for failing the inspection, three motor vehicle collisions on the MD roads, 55 dog complaints and 21 tickets issued. Bonneville RCMP had 23, 2,399 files created in- Bonneville RCMP had twenty-three, two thousand three hundred ninety-nine, uh, files created in June, July, and August. Five fifty were traffic-related and fourteen were, uh, impaired driving related in charges. Coal Lake, uh, just gave a normal report, they have a new staff sergeant. His name is Wes Benzmiller, so that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks, Mr. Reeve. Yeah, I also attended Alberta Care September seventh, uh, in Laduke, in Laduke County. A couple of the things, uh, we toured, we went to Westlock and toured a waste facility at Westlock and kinda one of the interesting things, we've, we've seen it before is, uh, they actually recycle all the plastics, one through seven, so if you look at the bottom of, like, a plastic bottle, it'll be a one and there's seven different types. Uh, interesting that he, he recy, recycles them in that he collects them and grinds all this stuff up as a mixed load and, and sells it. And it gets shipped to Southern Alberta and they make it into plastic wood and that sort of thing. So kinda interesting, they're, they're still doing that even though there's actually a shortage of plastics in Alberta because it all, it's, it's landfilled or shipped down to the state somewhere. Uh, we toured a tom, a compost facility at that same landfill. Company called Alteroot was actually producing, uh, higher-grade, uh, compost for farms. So they're trying to get, there's one farmer down there who's using all this compost as a supplement to fertilizer, so that seems to be going well for them. The, uh, landfill at Laduke, interesting enough, they're actually mining that landfill with a big loader and they're, they're dumping that household waste into, uh, an assembly process that just gets shredded and it gets round baled and big bail, big white bail wrap. And they're, they're gonna store that, uh, waste for future use for a waste energy project. So they're taking another landfill and they're gonna store it. Uh, they don't have a waste energy project yet, but they're looking at it, they had five, uh, they had a request for information and they had five companies, uh, send them, I guess they're, uh, what they can do with that waste. Bit, bit more talk about waste energy, there's a presenter that actually worked with the MD of Bonneville and did his, uh, uh, he did a presentation there on waste energy and he was actually here kinda looking at our possibility of going waste energy. Uh, Riverhurst had a family fun day on the tenth of September, uh, turned out really well. And thanks to, uh, some of the MD staff, Mr. Gandolfi was there and one of his staff and, uh, Alexa was there with, uh, maybe she was by herself? Anyway, it was great, they had a, they had a table set up and a tent and, and it was well-received. So I appreciate the, the support from the MD. And they had about a thousand there last year, I'm not sure how many this year, but it was a good turnout. And I think that's it, thank you.
Yeah, I was just saying thank you all of council for your reports and I attended the same meetings as many of you and you guys did a good job, so I don't have to report twice. Uh, also, we're gonna put, um, Mike into training, so he wins next year, so about a month before the thing next year, we're gonna start training you to win that event again, so we can have that. All right, I think we're gonna take a five-minute recess and then, uh, do you want a motion before we take this recess to go into camera? Yeah, let's do that. All right. Looking for a motion to go in camera.
I want your motion to go in camera.
Thank you, Counsel Slitchek makes a motion to go in camera. Call for the vote. All right, we're gonna take a five-minute recess.